Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the Barnstable Town Council meeting of June 5, 2025. In accordance with Mass. Journal Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting and if so, to please make your presence known. This meeting is being televised live via Xfinity Channel 8, Channel 1070, and High Definition Channel 1072. It may also be accessed via the Government Access Channel livestream feed on the town website, the My Barnstable app, the dedicated Barnstable streaming app, and streaming platforms including Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire Stick. So there's no reason to miss any meeting. Okay. Anna Clark, could I roll call, please?
Counselors. Bloom.
Here.
Burdick. Clark.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Leveque.
Here.
Ludke.
Here.
Mendez.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Penn.
Here.
Schnapp.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Tamish.
Here.
Turkelson.
Here.
You have quorum, thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, Counselor Starr and Counselor Penn are attending via Zoom. Okay. Counselor Ludke.
Thank you, President Tamish. If everyone could please remain seated while we learn a little bit about our veteran for this evening. There you see on the screen, that's a picture of Freeman Johnson, who's sitting in the front row. He is the oldest survivor of the Pearl Harbor attack, December 7, 1941. He's pictured there in San Francisco in 1941. Last week, we had a veteran from the 1960s, and I talked about maybe going back in a time capsule and how some of us up here weren't even born in 1962. I think I can say with certainty that none of us were born in 1941 here. So we're really going back in history now. And I'll just start quickly with what President Franklin Delano Roosevelt said on December 8. "Yesterday, December 7, 1941, a date which will live in infamy, the United States of America was suddenly and deliberately attacked by the naval and air forces of the Empire of Japan." That sets a little bit of a scene, and I wanted to go through a few of these pictures before we read Freeman's biography. This, we just heard from President Franklin Delano Roosevelt, those famous words. This is his grandson, and this is Freeman meeting with his grandson in 2016. This is at that same celebration, and this is Diane's favorite photograph of her dad, and he's smiling so much because they just announced his name, and he said, "That's my cheering section," as his family and friends were cheering for him. And again, it's Diane's favorite, and it's a beautiful photo. And this is Freeman, and he is in 2021 here. He gets around, he's out in LA, and he's visiting his old ship, the Iowa. And then I think what Lynn is going to do as I read the biography, she's going to show some pictures from his 105th birthday celebration, which we had here at the Adult Community Center recently. So take a look at the pictures, and I will read you a little bit about Freeman. Freeman K. Johnson was born in Springfield, Massachusetts, and moved to Waltham when he was five years old. He enlisted in Boston for the U.S. Navy. He attended boot camp in Newport, Rhode Island. Once aboard the USS St. Louis, he was assigned to the No. 1 fire room as a fireman. During 1940, the St. Louis surveyed Argentina when looking for a naval base that the United States could use. From there, he went to Hawaii and became part of the Pacific Fleet. On December 7, 1941, Freeman was a fireman in the No. 1 boiler room on the St. Louis. He was down in the boiler and heard the attack but didn't witness it. His job was to get the ship underway and out of the harbor. The USS St. Louis was the second ship out of Pearl Harbor. Much of his time subsequently was spent in the Pacific. He was assigned to the Brooklyn Navy Yard and the USS Iowa. The battleship USS Iowa transported President Franklin Delano Roosevelt to and from the Casablanca Conference in North Africa in December of 1943. This was part of a secret mission to deliver FDR and key advisers to a meeting with British Prime Minister Winston Churchill. The USS Iowa was also involved in other wartime duties, including serving as the flagship for the 3rd Fleet during the Japanese surrender in Tokyo Bay. On September 2, 1945, Freeman was on the mast of the Iowa, witnessing the surrender being signed, bringing an end to World War II. Freeman is the oldest living Pearl Harbor survivor in the world, confirmed by the sons and daughters of Pearl Harbor. Let's welcome Freeman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to every mother for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you remain standing for a moment of silence, and I would like to... Was Freeman going to speak?
Excuse me?
Did Freeman want to speak?
Freeman, did you want to speak?
No.
Diane is saying no.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought I was interrupting you. We'll stay standing for a moment of silence. I would like to dedicate that to the greatest generation ever and to all those who did not survive World War II. Thank you. Okay, at this point in our meeting, we'll have public comment. Please sign in with your name and village for public comment. Public comment is three minutes. Please keep your comments brief and to the point. As always, we welcome written comments, and they may be directed to council at town.barnstableMA.us, and will be distributed to the entire council. Ms. Barbosa.
Hello, guys. I mean, hi, everybody. My name is Mary Ann Barbosa, and I'm going to start by saying, well, there's a reason I'm going to say this. For the past few months, I've been going through personal challenges, still going through them, no big deal, it's called life. But there's a reason that I'm saying that, or the reason I'm bringing that up is, since the committees have ended, I haven't been able to follow what's going on, and so I'm kind of at a loss a little bit on how the committees turned out or what was planned. But it's okay, because I'll be catching up. And I also wanted to say that myself and Mother Bear, who is a member of the tribe, will be doing a presentation or be... I tried to email you, but the eyes aren't what they used to be, because I kept going to the mail, and it said, "Did not go through." So I'm letting it be known, and that I want to have a presentation on the 26th of the next council meeting, okay? And the other thing that I wanted to bring up, I don't know why I'm losing my train of thought here, but during that committee, I enjoyed it. A lot of things, I think, were accomplished, but there were some things that weren't accomplished. And there was a very nice person, I like him, very nice. He said, "Well, you know, Mary Ann, you don't work well with... You don't play politics. You've got to learn how to do politics. And sometimes you have to kind of give the niceness." Well, I'm here to tell everybody, no, I don't play politics. I do not, and I will not. And if that means that nobody wants me on their committees, oh, well. I won't be on your committees, but I will still fight you if need be. If the politics is not for helping the people, I will never play politics. And I am not going to come with sugar and honey when I'm fighting for things that should be the right of a human being to have. I am not going to beg for the people in the community when it's their right to stand and breathe like everybody else. I ain't bringing no honey, and I ain't bringing no sugar. So with that, I'm going to end on that, but I do want to say to the President, I don't know what's the procedure, because, like I said, I've tried emailing you, but I will guess that it's my eyes, not the email. I can't, I don't have a computer, I do it on my phone. And every time I kept going back, it kept saying, "Email not sent." So I'm saying it now, I would like to do a presentat... Well, the two of us will be doing a presentation. I don't know how long the presentations can go on for, I know, we all know I have a problem with speaking. So just tell me the time and what we could do, but we will be ready for the 26, okay? It's very important. And if there's some more committees out there that I can join, y'all need to let me know, because I'm looking myself.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barbosa.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Mary Ann, if you could talk to Cynthia, our administrative assistant, and give her your information, I can get in touch with you.
Oh, Cindy, oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
How are you this evening? Eric Schwab from Hyannis. There are members of the DeLuise family here, which are going to come up and speak shortly, and I've gotten to know them pretty well, and we've had some conversations about how they were treated by the Conservation Commission, specifically the Chair, Tom Lee. And I went back and looked at the videotapes, and I encourage all of you to do the same. They were ignored. They came to all the meetings, dialed into the Zoom, just like the rest of us. They spoke, but no one heard them, and no one considered them. They were given their three minutes, and that's it. Those of us who wrote letters in support of the DeLuise family were treated the same way. We sent 22 letters, which we sent a copy to you guys, you have them all. We sent 22 letters. Do you know how many Tom Lee responded to? Want to guess? Zero. So if you're going to be a Chair of a major regulatory committee, and you're... They're representing the residents of Barnstable, and you have an issue that draws 20 letters, 22 letters, do you think maybe you should respond to one of them? I mean, drop them a note, saying, "Thank you." I mean, the Conservation Administrator was very kind. He contacted everyone, said, "I got your letter, I'm forwarding it to Tom Lee." But that's when it fell into a hole, okay? If the Conservation Commission is going to be a hole, right, then it needs to be restaffed. We need people on conservation that care about the residents of this town, that care about the environment, care about the trees, care about the frogs, right? That's not happening right now. So someone needs to look at that. Thank you very much.
Roberta Mock, AD Greenwood Ave. I bought the property that Lennar was going to do, just what it looks like Stu Bornstein is going to do to the DeLuise family. So I came in here, I'm sorry, I'm not properly dressed, to be a support to the DeLuise family and for this wetlands that... This is an injustice that has been done by the Cape Cod Commission to the DeLuise family. Somehow it got... First of all, I don't understand, and I don't understand enough about politics in the town and so forth, how things are run, but why is the Cape Cod Commission most important, still in Zoom? A lot more can be accomplished in public, and I don't know how that can be fixed. I think it really needs to be fixed, because he actually closed public comment. It doesn't look like the procedure was done where they vetted the 100-foot property and somehow reduced it to 50 feet, and then they were going to build right on the 50. If you look, watch the video, it's unbelievable. And he closed the public comment, even though they weren't even going to leave three feet. All they ended up doing was leaving three feet so that they can, you know, give them enough room to put shingling on, three feet, so that they can put scaffolding. It was just an injustice. I watched that video, and I felt as a neighbor of the wetlands, of the West End Rotary area, which in any other town, any other village, that herring run would still be there. But we have a history in the Village of Hyannis not affording the same respect to the wetlands. And so I am here to support the DeLuise family. I can't believe they put a four-story building 10 feet away from their home. Yeah, I'm here to be supportive, to somehow... Something isn't right here, and it's an injustice that makes me feel like Mr. Lee should step down. Something needs to be fixed, because a lot of people are getting hurt with what's going on in our village. Thank you.
Thank you all. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Are we paying attention up front? Thank you. I'm here to state that when the Conservation Commission had the meeting, I was on Zoom, and I spoke. They were truly, truly disrespectful. They should not ever speak to a town member like that. When they were doing the... Talking about the creek, and they had their not-so-detailed information, and I had told them, "I've lived there, the little stream is right behind my house. I got to walk over the footbridge every day to get back and forth to my brothers." And when I told them that the stream was never dry, they had said, "Well, the mosquito people said that it was, and we'll go with what they say." How the hell do you say that to somebody? Would any of you like to be talked like that? When you make a comment? Anybody in this room like to be repeated to like that? What they should have said is, "There's different information that we have, and we'll do a team to go down there and inspect it." And to this day, they have it, and they're still pushing forward. And they were granted that. And in that meeting, they would say, "Well, can you move it over like a couple feet here and a couple feet there?" That's ridiculous. If it was any other neighborhood, it wouldn't have gone through. So what's up with that? Is anybody here working with us to find out what's going on? Or is it just people at the end of the road that nobody cares about? Or is it money is all that people want? That's a wetland. It runs over a mile. You start polluting that, it goes on the Mitchell's Way, into Betts Pond, into Stewart Creek, and out to Seastreet Beach. Is that okay with you? Any of you swim at Seastreet Beach? If anyone swims there, get polluted there, because the commissioners aren't doing their job. It would never happen in another neighborhood where there's wealthy people at. I live on the end of that street. If they're going to dig that up, how long is that going to take? And what am I supposed to do at the end of the dead-end street? Well, they take three years to cut down trees and dig up roads. I'm supposed to live like that because somebody wants to put up a building? Hyannis has enough, enough buildings, and I am highly irritated with all of the town. It's not right, and I'm not going to stand for it. And you town council people, get on your jobs, those that aren't. Do your job.
Ms. DeLuise, you have 15 seconds.
I'm sure I do. All right, good afternoon, folks of the committee. How are you all doing?
Sir, did you sign in?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And could you just give us your name and village, please?
Jeffrey DeLuise, Barnstable or Hyannis. I'm involved with the project that's there on 25 Pleasant Hill Lane or 32 Pleasant Hill Lane where they want to put up these buildings on that street. Now, we understand that there's a one-way street, and they're talking about, so it's a one-way street, dead end, there's only one way in, one way out. That's it. So construction is a disaster. And now, on top of that, the area we're talking about, the stream that's there behind 25 Pleasant Hill Lane, I have personally been taking care of that stream for the last 35, 40 years, myself, nobody else. Every spring after the... I get in there and I clean out every damn leaf, tree branch and everything, from the base of that pond, through and behind my sister's house, down to the corner, 290 Mitchell Way, unclog the drains so it doesn't flood, which it did flood this year again, undo that, clean the stream to the mouth of Betty's Pond. All the branches, all the leaves, all the... Everything I do myself, I've never seen the commissioner and no one down there doing anything. They'll park their car at the top of our street and sit in the car for hours. As long as the GPS says the car is there, they must be doing their job. My sister and I sat there and watched them in their car for an hour, never got out then, got in their car, and drove away. Job accomplished. They didn't do nothing. So when they give you these reports, "Oh, the flood, the stream is dry and all this," how the hell do they know if they don't get their asses out the car and get busy doing what they're supposed to do? I've been doing their work for 30, 40 years or more. You all should be sending me a check for cleaning that damn stream. And Betty's Pond entrance and the exit to the east over there behind Boudreaux's place, I've cleaned that to the cul-de-sac and unclogged the drains so the water will flow and not back up everything. I've been doing this myself for years, and I've never seen any of them down there. Boudreaux used to look out the window and watch me cutting trees inside the swamp, because it's building up and blocking the flow, and I'm pulling things apart and trashing everything out of there. Now, as far as this building here we're looking at, they want two four-story buildings, two of them, not even in conceptual shape, just puzzled, squeezed in to get as much room as they can, so they can make a parking lot, which will go right along the base of the stream, around the corner to see right up to against Stevens Street, go around the next-door neighbor's fence, along his fence, and right back out to Pleasant Hill Lane. They're going to box his house in with a parking lot, cut down every damn tree there to put in two gigantic four-story buildings, and then say, "Oh, we're going to put a plastic berm up to catch all the water and drainage so it doesn't go on the stream."
Mr. DeLuise, your time is up.
I just don't... I just don't get this. This is residential area. Why should a commercial building be stuck in the middle of residential people? It doesn't make any sense. It benefits one person.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maria DeLuise Reed, and I live on Aunt Betty's Pond, and I clean the trash along the road for 50 years. I'm 62 years old. I've always lived pretty much on Mitchell's Way, other than college, and my father and the family, we have cleaned the pond, we have cleaned the road ever since I was a kid. I've never seen anyone from the time come down there and pick any kind of trash up. I do it. I pay for the trash to get dumped. Not only that, my son, my stepson cleaned Aunt Betty's Pond, took all the tires out of there, took all the trash out of there, and nobody else did that. There is wildlife down there, there's... I can't put a tar driveway in my driveway, and I live on 69 Mitchell's Way. I can't tar my driveway, and I'm well away from the pond, but somehow they can put a parking lot at the edge? Have you been down there? The water's got to be... What, up to here, Jeffrey?
At least.
At least up to here? How can it be dry when it's up to here? How can it be dry when every season I did the swanicles on Aunt Betty's Pond, documenting the swans on the pond? There's a river otter in there somewhere, because I've seen him. I've seen him in my yard. You have... How do you put all this stuff there and not have any idea what's going on? And you're right, this would never happen anywhere else, and you know that. All of you know that. And the people there, you know, look at them. How do you sleep at night? I want to send you all some subliminal messages, let me tell you, you all are going to have some dreams. Because it's going to put... I'm going to put it in your head that what you're doing is wrong, and you know it. You downright know it. And I've been cleaning up that pond and doing that work for years. My brother's been down there doing that work for years. We put boats down the little river when we were kids. I walked my duck down the pond, down the river, chasing the duck in the pond, because we could walk through the pond, I had a pet duck. That was the exercise, up and down the river. And you're going to sit there and tell me that it's dry? If it's dry, how does Aunt Betty's Pond... Now, it can go low, but how can Aunt Betty's Pond... How can that be dry, but Aunt Betty's Pond continues to flow? And the water continues to flow across the streets? How? It doesn't make any sense at all. And to think that nobody went down there... "Oh, I tried to get on that commission meeting, I had a hard time getting into Zoom, and when I did get on, they were like, 'I'm sorry, it's over.'" I said, "I've been trying to get on for about an hour and a half, I just could not get into the Zoom. I'm a total computer, I don't like them." They were very rude when I finally did get a chance to speak. They should have been like, "Oh, glad you're here, Ms. Reed. You're affected by this." Absolutely, go ahead and use your comment. I had to fight with them and yell at them and go, "No, I am going to speak." They had no intention to let me speak whatsoever. And I just don't understand where this type of abomination... I don't know what else to tell you, what it is. It's wrong. It doesn't make any sense.
Your time is up, thank you for your comments.
Mm-hmm.
I feel like it's been a while. This is somewhat in relation to what everybody's saying here.
Heather, would you just identify yourself for the record?
Sorry about that. Heather Swenson, Centreville. I think we can all agree that there is something to be said about the value in eye contact and visualizing body language, et cetera, et cetera, when talking to someone. Solely conducting meetings remotely via Zoom was thought to be necessary during COVID. However, we're now all aware that many of the methods practiced during 2020 and later were not necessary and therefore are definitely still not necessary. I do realize, but cannot comprehend why, that on March 28, 2025, Governor Keeley signed into law a bill which extends temporary provisions pertaining to open meeting law until June of 2027. Further extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location, meaning everyone can be sitting at their home instead of in a conference room together. Think of how many times during one of your meetings you lean over to the person... Think of how many times during one of your meetings you lean over to the person next to you on either side and ask them a question or share paperwork that's passed out. Zoom meetings many times have poor connections, she just mentioned this, poor audio, lack of attention by board members and general public tuning in. I've witnessed many a meeting where board members have their computers muted and many times they have to be called back to their screen. Where were they? Dogs are barking, doorbells are ringing. No one seems 100% focused on the discussion. I perfectly understand, of course, there are times for members to be away from town and then that remote is a benefit. They're still able to participate. But that should not be the consistent form of meeting attendance. I think we all agree that as a society, we've lost the ability to finesse of, the finesse of conducting business and conversations face to face. We see it today's youth during school, social events and employment interviews. Yikes. And that lack of person-to-person contact has extended into not just our youth but adults. I urge the town council to address the issue of open in-person meetings with all your town boards and committees. Strongly suggest the need for all departments and committees to go back to conducting business in person, regardless of what I believe to be ridiculous, the June 2027 extension by our governor. Just because you can does not mean that you should. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
My name is Juliette Farrell. I am currently a resident of Marston's Mills, but in 1990, I rented a house from Eugenia Ford's on Mitchell's Way and lived there for several years. I am intimately aware of this body of water. I have been a close friend of Maria's, a friend of Lisa's, for quite a while. I have seen this water countless, countless, countless times. In over three decades, I have never seen it dry. I have never seen it-
Excuse me, Juliette, could you move the mic a little bit closer? They can't hear you on the-
I have never seen it dry in over 30 years. I have never seen it dry enough to walk through without getting your pants cuffed wet, like you would have to get wet to go through it. So, it's baloney, in my opinion, that it ever goes dry. So, I have never witnessed it in over three decades. If you look on the town's property lookup website, it's clearly marked as wetland on the town's website. Like, why is it suddenly not wetland? That makes no sense to me at all. That's fishy. No pun intended. I would also make the point that there's a new apartment complex going in on North Street. There's apartments for rent right now in the village marketplace that are not, that are empty. And I know they're saying affordable housing, but I also know what they're planning to charge. No, that's not affordable. Like, who can afford that? It was, I heard $3,600 for a three-bedroom. Like, you could buy a house. Like, that's ridiculous. It's not affordable. We don't need it. We don't need this being shoved into this sensitive area. We should be restoring this waterway. I bet you money that trout and herring used to run up that stream. Jeff's seen eels. We should be restoring it, not trampling it. And we don't need that housing, especially right there. And I reiterate what she said about the Zoom meetings. The only purpose served by Zoom meetings when we could do in persons is to stifle the people. And in this day and age, with government being what it is, I think embracing the people and having a dialogue is even more important than ever. And I oppose this project. 100%.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Moran. I'm from Cotuit. Have been Cotuit now for eight or nine years. I've been in Barnstable for 25 years. In the process, back in 2005, I was appointed to the Conservation Commission. I didn't know what I was getting into. In the process of doing that, however-
Larry, would you lift the mic up a little bit?
Yeah, it's on. Sorry, want me to start again?
No.
All right. Okay. Three, I had no intention of speaking tonight, but these are the kind of people we need to have appear in front of you. They've got to come as a group. They've got to be heard, and they've got to be acted upon. So, on the 26th, which is the next meeting you have, I'm going to come through with a real review of how public comments are handled. That's a separate topic for tonight. But back when the 23 class was elected, all 13 precincts had to be re-elected, all of you. Some of you were repeats, some of you were new, but if there's one committee in this town that needs to be purged, it's the Conservation Commission. I was on that commission. I was on that commission for 17 years. The best thing that happened to me is that I didn't get reappointed. Absolutely the best thing, because that's why I've gotten to know you people. That's why I've been here. Some of you don't like what I'm doing, but I don't really care. I'm here to, I'm here to represent the public, and all of you are here to represent the public. So, in this particular case, Tom Lee's term ends this month. He should never be reappointed. He's all over the place. He, he's the one that was arrogant towards the public, and too many other people in the committee or commission went along with him. I did not. Two or three other people did not. So, in this particular case, what you're hearing needs to be done. The final thing I'm going to say is that when issues are presented to you, whether it's in writing or verbal, there should be comment back for everything. Everything that's filed in writing should be read into the record, not just said it came in. And so, what we need to do is decide, where are we going with this method of communications that we have? I don't know, but there's a group of people in this town that really want to get a message out to you, and I'm honored to be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jane Ward from Centerville. Thanks for giving me a, a chance to speak. I wanted to just remind you again, I know you have a full agenda tonight and the stretch code is not yet on it, but I want to bring that up again as something that I hope gets on the agenda when you, when you do get through your, your budget deliberations, because what will happen if the stretch code and the green communities is embraced and applied for is money coming towards us. There's not very many opportunities right now, the way things are going nationally, for money to come towards us to help us make public buildings, including our schools and our town hall and our police and, and other important buildings that we share across the town, more energy efficient with healthier indoor air, which is quite a bit of what we hoped we would be able to do for our school district with the $42 million that was approved just about a year ago by federal funding from DOE and then was, you know, basically frozen. Hopefully, it'll still come back, but I know you're approving quite a bit, a very important school budget, and over the last couple meetings, I think you also had a number of items for the school district specifically for upgrading HVAC and indoor air quality. And that's something that passing the stretch code and then going on to apply for the green community will allow us to do. So, just, just another reminder, please put it on the agenda when you have a chance to do that. My second point is a different topic. It's still safety. I feel like I've got my, my Air Force hat on again because we always, we finished every week with a safety briefing. We couldn't leave the base until we had our safety briefing. I've been on the Cape Cod Commission Transportation Advisory Committee to the Vision Zero Project. Vision Zero policy is a, is another very sensible policy that's really kind of a complement to the Complete Streets policy, which has also been approved by the town several years ago. Complete Streets and Vision Zero both have the goal of making roads and sidewalks and communities safer for all road users, not just people driving, but including people driving, as well as cyclists, people using transit, people walking. They're, they're somewhat complementary policies, and they both allow local communities to have state money that's filtered down from federal levels to make, to make usually village centers safer. So, Complete Streets is a little more focused on the engineering and the construction. Vision Zero includes education, enforcement and engineering. And many of them would prioritize similar projects. For example, in Hyannis or Barnstable, Route 132 from where Beers Way intersects north to the, to the airport rotary is the number one project priority on Complete Streets. Similarly, it's important on Vision Zero. And the West End Rotary in Hyannis is a, is a highly rated area for both of them. What Vision Zero, what Vision Zero will allow us to do is to get some more affordable things going at the education level that won't involve the millions that construction. So, the commission would like people to comment on their action plan within the next week. If you can go to the Cape Cod Commission slash Vision Zero and just put your comments in, either your favorite projects or the, the project overall, and that will help them move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Good evening. My name's Sharon Barrows. I grew up here as Sharon Kendall. And in my twenties and thirties, I was on some of your committees. I've been away for 30 years and just returned recently. And I was very disappointed to watch that Conservation Commission meeting. I was appalled that this is what our government is doing now, that people who live here and are in crisis because of somebody trying to earn some money by ruining the environment and the neighborhood. And when they spoke about it, it was like they said nothing. Okay, approved. I couldn't believe what I was seeing. Now, Dolores Deluse helped raise me. I grew up crossing that creek every day, like the rest of them said. I was a scared kid. There was crawly stuff in there. There were snakes and eels and frogs and a whole environment of stuff going on, and I was sure I was going to fall in. And then it got real cold one winter, and they convinced me to go out on the ice. And we went back on the creek, back where I had never seen before, and it opened up to this beautiful enchanted ice palace. Snow and ice and birds and nature. That's what's there. And they want to build a four-story building on a hill so that everything that comes off of it, and when they're building it, is going to go into that creek and destroy it. Now, Dolores Deluse and Joe Deluse did a lot for this community. Dolores's 91st birthday was yesterday, so she's not here. She's done enough. So, we're all here. And we want to be heard, and we want you to do something to stop it. All of you. You can't be silent. You can't let the Conservation Committee ignore conserving the environment. What are they doing? Bring them in. Fire them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Diane Jensen. I live on West Main Street in Hyannis. I have been coming to the Cape or living on the Cape for almost 70 years. My parents, longer than that. My grandparents, even longer than that. Of course, they passed away about 20 years ago. I am so mad and so appalled about this project on this creek and the other projects that are going on in Hyannis. Cape Cod is one of the very special places in the United States where we have very old buildings. We have very special places here. And it breaks my heart for me to see us start to destroy it and modernize it. And to put in four-story, modern apartment buildings next to a beautiful creek. Where is the sense in that? Where is the common sense in that? There isn't any. There just isn't any. I, I just can't say anymore. I, I, it just makes me so mad to see what is happening to Cape Cod after all of these years.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Lynn, do we have public comment online?
We do. We have Bettina Abe. Bettina, you have three minutes. You may unmute.
Hello, thank you so much. I'm Bettina Abe, Hyannis Port. You may have seen me most recently as a director of Safe Twin Brooks, Inc., but I'm speaking tonight on my own behalf about another situation. I too am dismayed at the April 29th, 2025 decision by the Barnstable Conservation Commission permitting the proposed 40-unit double apartment building and parking lot at 32 Pleasant Hill Lane. I'm shocked at the insufficient scientific data regarding the streams classification and associated setbacks, lack of required documentation of the watershed size, inadequate review of sewer, stormwater and erosion plans, absence of a wildlife survey, potential loss of critical habitat and the proposed cutting of hundreds of trees. I wish to emphasize the environmental sensitivity of the 3.34-acre 32 Pleasant Hill Lane site and its importance to the surrounding environmental justice community. I strongly advocate for its permanent conservation through town acquisition. There are four abutting town-owned parcels that, if formed into one conservation area, could protect almost five acres of green space, offering sanctuary to birds, reptiles, amphibians, diverse wildlife and people. A neighborhood trail system could connect to the 18-acre elementary school for nature walks and the nine-acre Barnstable Recreation Center adjacent to Crooked Pond that all connect via a wildlife corridor to this little creek. There is much public benefit in these important natural resource lands, and they should be protected in perpetuity. All of these properties are in the Stewart's Creek watershed. Please do all you can to protect this little bit of Hyannis's remaining natural area and the most densely built community on the Cape. It would be an endearing gift to the people and critters of Hyannis if the town of Barnstable could acquire this parcel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sandy Jones. Sandy, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Sandy Jones from Centerville. I'm actually going to read a letter that I had sent to the town council this evening, as well as some attachments regarding the Centerville Playground construction. Dear Town Council and Town Manager Ls, I am writing to express my concern that the latest news regarding the Centerville Playground is unacceptable and not adequately communicated to the community. I've attached several press releases and notifications from the town which failed to mention the delay again with the Centerville Playground and the construction date of 20, of spring 2026. There is not an announcement, to my knowledge. This delay is particularly disappointing given the- This delay is particularly disappointing, given the playground was dismantled in the middle of the summer, three years ago during 2023, and the funds were allocated in, in 2021. When I first addressed you in September of 2023, I emphasized that residents were not adequately informed, resulting in a lack of public input and decision-making processes. I had knocked on 300 doors and heard the same comments from our residents. I believe at the time, Council Letky suggested a focus group should be established acknowledging the communication was not effectively reaching Barnstable residents, leading to widespread frustration and anger. Regrettably, two years later, the situation remains unchanged. We, the residents of Centerville, are expressing our frustration regarding the recent events at Mother's Park, mature 40-year-old rhododendrons and trees donated were chopped down in mid-February for the sewer project, which has now been delayed until November of 2025. These trees were donated by Alma Nelson, Hazel Warren, the Centerville Beautification Committee over 25 years ago, and the contributors were residents who loved our town and contributed significantly to its beauty. A six-week delay would have allowed for the removal and transplant of these trees, and now we look at stumps in the park. The recent demolition of the Cobles Beach Bath House before the summer season seems counterintuitive. The existing concrete structure could have been repainted and cleaned up for the 2025 season, and now we have a fenced-off porta potty. Our construction timelines are inconsistent, and as a result, Centerville is looking a bit shabby. The children miss the playground, and if Osterville is having theirs built before ours, I find that a shame. What can be done to expedite this prog, project? Should a neighborhood group be formed to get the information out to the public as soon as these changes occur? Please send me in the right direction. We are hoping for an updated press release soon. Centerville, Main Street Centerville and the playground is so greatly missed. I planted and I watered the plants around the fence, and I cannot tell you how many times mothers unpack their kids, get out of their cars to stop and see it fenced off. And we really need to get this project going. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none? Any further public comment in the room?
I bought another three minutes. I need another three minutes.
Nice try. Nice try. Thank you, though. Come on. Yeah. Okay. We'll now move into council response. Counselor Mendez.
Thank you, President Tamish. About the Pleasant Street project, the Delusers are absolutely right. If this was any other village, this project would have been stopped. If this was Katuut, Marston's Mills, where I grew up, or Osterville, I guarantee you a Conservation Commission of some sort would have stepped in and bought this property. No doubt about it, especially with the town abutted land. You know, other villages are worried about playgrounds. We're worried about quality of life in Hyannis. How many condos and multifamily units can we take seriously? What used to be a 20-minute drive to Marston's Mills is now a half-hour drive. What used to be a half-hour drive to Falmouth is now a 45-to-50-minute drive. Try to get out on Bursus Way or West Main Street between 4:00 and 6:00 o'clock at night. Good luck. Try to get out to go to work at 7:00 in the morning. People in Hyannis deserve open space. People in Hyannis deserve a quality of life. And as I told everybody before, I will not support one more multi, multifamily, multi-unit project going on in Hyannis. These other villages have to start taking on some of this housing. Plain and simple. Plain and simple. You know, I, we all grew up around Mitchell's Way, even if we didn't live on Mitchell's Way. And that creek isn't dry. It's not. That's just a lie. Okay? The Deluse family has supported that and has maintained that creek for many years. We all know that. We used to fish Aunt Betty's Pond. There used to be great bass fishing and pickerel fishing there. We all fished there as kids. So we all know what it is. But as far as that project goes, to me, it's a nonstarter. It's not even close. Like I said, if it was another village, somebody would have stepped in and did something about it, but it's Hyannis, so who gives a damn? And that's the way I feel. It's a shame that one village is supposed to take on all this housing. It's a shame. You know, people in Hyannis deserve a quality of life. People in Hyannis deserve safety in their streets. People in Hyannis deserve to be able to drive through their village and not take a half-hour to get from one end to the other. You know, you can't even, there's not even places for kids to play in Hyannis anymore. And this has all come about in the last 20 years. So, you know, I agree with everything they're saying, and I'm one who doesn't try to put his finger on the scale until something's in front of me, but this is ridiculous. It's gotten to the point now where it's, it's just crazy. These other villages have to start to do something. They have to, because we can't do it all. Thank you.
Any further response to public comment that I left here? Counselor Crowe?
Thanks, Chairman Tamish, President Tamish. Just wanted to say, the Deluse family, I have also looked this up on the map. It is clearly marked in town maps as marshland. And from what I've heard from everybody tonight, I'd like to go over there myself and take a look at it. And I have no, no doubt that what we are hearing tonight is, is, is the plain truth. And it, it, it doesn't seem like this project is, is, should be shoehorned in such an area and such a large development, or a development at all, in my opinion. I agree with Counselor Mendez. I think we have reached a point where, you know, maybe we are full. Okay? And this, the amount of building that's going on is, I believe, at some point is going to be, a lot of it's going to be empty unless they bring down the costs of those units. And it'll probably be done by the market. And so if the Deluse family will invite me, I'll come and knock on your door someday and take a look for myself. So I appreciate it.
You aren't invited. Tomorrow, we'll put you back in. Bring your boots.
Thank you.
Counselor Boone?
I agree with what Counselor Mendez said. Lisa knows how I feel about the whole thing. Just, you know, right now in, in Hyannis, you haven't seen anything yet as, as to what it's going to be like with regard to traffic and parking. We have the Cascade going up. We have the TD Bank. We have the new Hyannis Inn. We have a four, four-story monstrosity going up next to the Hyannis Fire Department. We have another one that sticks out like a sore thumb on the corner of North Street and, I can't remember the street there. Yeah, Basset Lane. And, and on Barnstable Road, if that isn't enough traffic, on Barnstable Road, we have at least three massive projects going up, up toward Kentucky Fried Chicken and, and stuff. I'm, I'm talking about a lot of units in there. And it seems like we're not thinking about the future. We're just thinking about, we have this thing that we had, we need housing, we need housing, and, you know? And we're not thinking about the future of this town and what it's going to be like. You think, you think traffic is bad now at the airport rotary? Are you kidding me? You know how bad it's going to be when all those projects are on Barnstable Road? They're all in my precinct, too. It's really time to stop.
It's going to look like Long Island.
You know?
Moratorium.
I, I think a moratorium is something to consider. I could say more, but, but that's it. I'm sorry.
This is not, I'm sorry, this is not a discussion.
It should be.
Counselor Letky?
Thank you, President Tamish. We don't need to think about a moratorium. We need to do a moratorium. And it needs to be voted on. We had the report from the Ad Hoc Zoning Committee. It was a beautiful report, beautifully documented. We haven't done anything with it. We need to do something with it immediately, and a moratorium needs to go in place because we are going to do something, and we need to stop this. And Lisa Deluse, you get the prize tonight because you had the best sentence. You said, "It would never happen in another neighborhood." You know why it would never happen in another neighborhood? Because no other neighborhood, no other village, has this ridiculous zoning that we have here. It's absurd. That's why you get the prize. And that's why it's happening. Oh, it's by right. Oh, it's by right. So that's why it gets rubber stamped. Well, we stop at being by right. We do the moratorium and knock this stuff off. I'm with Jeff and Charlie here. It's absurd. And Jeffrey Deluse, you also get a prize tonight for the best description of the absurdity of that design. I was there live at that Zoom meeting. I watched the whole thing. I listened to the whole thing. I spoke out against the project, but your description is beautiful. And I spoke out, you know, whenever we do these projects, we leave these little white spaces. I said, you know, there's something in these white spaces. We just look at these things with a, with a myopic view. You described what's going to happen to that house there, surrounded by this monstrosity. It's unacceptable, and I just, it just can't go on. We had such beautiful comments tonight. Diane, what beautiful comments you had. We're watching that. We're watching the destruction of our village, and we are a village, and we can be. And Charlie's right. You don't know the half of it when you see all of these that are proved. And you know what? You don't see a lot of them because they're by right. You don't see them until they're done. And what we've done to ourselves is, is unacceptable. And I hope, President Tamish, we have a discussion tonight to move forward on these zoning changes immediately and ask that Attorney Nobur research a moratorium based on the report from the Ad Hoc Committee, that we stop this now, because we already have way too many. And Bettina Abe, absolutely, you know, your comments are beautifully taken. I look later in our agenda, I see item 2025-183. We've seen these over and over. It's an appropriation order in the amount of 1.35 million for community preservation funds in Katuut. Katuut, Marston's Mills, Katuut, Marston's Mills, over and over, they get these funds. Hyannis gets nothing. And if you, my final, I'll wrap it up with the local comprehensive plan, which is supposed to be our overarching document. It came back overwhelmingly from you, from the residents, that water was the most important thing. The water in Hyannis is the least important thing, it seems. It's just totally ignored. I know that we had Bettina talking about Save Twin Brooks. They've been trying to do a project to clean up Stewart's Creek. This feeds right into it. We had beautiful testimony from you folks. You know how the water system works. Why do we just ignore it? And then, you know, Katuut and Marston's Mills, I'm not trying to bring all the rest of the villages down to our level. Why don't we bring Hyannis up a little bit? So that's my ask, Mr. President, that we do this moratorium and do something tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Turkelson?
Thank you, thank you, President Tamish. I sometimes think that we need to begin with the end in mind. And unfortunately, we just started with plopping larger and larger developments into this environment, maybe without thinking about the long-term consequences and what the end of that would be. I echo Betty's comments about the Ad Hoc Zoning Committee doing all that work, and I hope this council can come together to see that maybe it needs tweaking. We had 18 amendments on the day, so maybe that wasn't quite ready for primetime, and now we need to think about how we can make that a more sustainable system if we really want by right at all. So that's something I think we need to consider. You know, I drove here tonight, and I was, I was astounded. We, we have a new pump station. We've cleaned up an area that, that was a gas station. And I said to myself, why did we plant a lawn with irrigation in an area where we're always talking about water conservation? We want pollinator gardens, and, and it's just a big lawn. I'm like, we didn't even put a park in that space. Maybe we should have been putting a playground there. So it's, it's kind of like, we say we want things for the environment. We have our open space. We have Barnstable Land Trust helping us pick up properties in other areas. I don't know why we couldn't think about, how could we have conserved this land, especially near other lands that we could have connected? So it just seems to me that the siloing of our government and the disjointedness with which we do things is leading us down a road that just isn't sustainable. So I echo Counselor Letky's comments and hope we have a fruitful conversation about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Snip?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for coming tonight. I've been looking at the map during a lot of the public comment because I've been out of town for a couple weeks and just kind of came into this issue today. So I didn't have as much time to research it before the meeting. And it does look, the parcel does look like something that I wish may not have been included in this particular zoning, given that it is surrounded by four parcels that have already been designated as conservation land by the town. And again, I don't know enough about this particular parcel, but unfortunately, the way the Conservation Commission has to review projects, they have certain, you know, they're, they're following state regulations, and if there's a way to, you know, create buffer zones, they may have to approve requests by developers. What they don't have a right to do is act disrespectfully to the public. And I didn't see the meeting, so I can't speak to what actually happened. Zoom meetings do sometimes contribute to a sense that there isn't as much interaction among, you know, with the public and the committee. So I don't know exactly what are the paths forwards regarding this parcel, but I think there's enough interest here on the council to, to make sure that, you know, it doesn't go forward if, in fact, there are ways that we can maybe look at it again. And I can't agree more with Counselor Turkelson. I was hoping for a little bit different outcome on that parcel that now has our pump station. So maybe this is just a temporary lawn that we're looking at, but we did have, you know, at least nicer plantings before it was disrupted, and I'm hoping that we can rethink, you know, the longer-term plan for that parcel. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Regarding your, your comment about the zoning issues, we actually discussed that on Wednesday. We are planning on having a workshop on the 26th regarding the zoning report. And what I was going to do is ask the councilors to go through that report, come up with their priorities, because obviously, everything cannot be implemented at once. Staff has to format the zoning and go through the whole process with it, go to the planning board. So on the 26th, we're going to have a discussion, a workshop regarding those zoning, the zoning report, and how you want to move forward on it. So that, that's in the works, okay? Counselor Letky?
Perhaps at that workshop, we could have Attorney Nobur work up some moratorium language? That that could be an option on the table for us? And then to the folks out here, file an appeal. You have 10 days from the 3rd of June, which was when the Order of Conditions was signed. Do not miss that deadline. File the appeal, because you just don't want to miss a deadline. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Any further comment? Okay. If I could back up for just one moment, I was a little bit remiss at the end of public comment. It's been my habit to recognize the emails that we have, and as I said, the emails sent to the council are distributed to all the councilors. So we received a email from Paul Nizwicki regarding supporting the West Barnstable CPC funding for the railroad station. Juliet Farrell regarding 32 Pleasant Hill Lane. I think she also spoke tonight. Rob Boone in support of the Concom ruling of the Jenkins Bog in Centerville. John Green in support of the West Barnstable Train Station. And actually, he gave quite an interesting history of the West Barnstable Train Station. Linda Pagnato in support of the West Barnstable Train Station, and Ryan Colahan, also in support of the CPC funding for the West Barnstable Train Station. So. So, okay. We all set on the council response?
Excuse me, Craig. We sent you 22 emails regarding Pleasant Hill Lane. It was distributed to all of you. You should at least acknowledge that we received those emails.
Okay. I apologize for that. I don't believe I saw 22, but... Excuse me? Okay. All right. Town Manager Communications. You all received the Town Manager Communications. They are also, have been distributed to you. It's also available online. The one interesting one, very one we're proud of, Solid Waste Division's Lawrence Rennie, was honored with the First Responder Award by the New England Chapter of the American Public Works Association. As you recall, Lawrence was instrumental in saving the life of a woman who was struck by a motor vehicle at a town transfer station several months ago. Town of Barnstable will be hosting a ceremony commemorating the 75th anniversary of the start of the Korean War on Wednesday, June 25th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Korean War Memorial. All are welcome. The next round of grant funding for the opioid abatement fund grants are open. Deadline for submission is June 30th. And there's also a video report providing an update on the Local Comprehensive Plan and the Downtown Hyannis Facade Grant Program. All right. Does anybody have any questions for the Town Manager regarding his report? Seeing none. The minutes. We're going to hold off on the adoption of the minutes for the last meeting. There was a concern raised about some of the verbiage regarding the ADU article and the way it was presented in the minutes. So Attorney Nobur and the town clerk are going to take a look at that and make sure it is accurate, okay? So we will move the acceptance of the minutes to the next meeting. Communications of elected official boards, committees, and staff. Counselor Turkelson?
Thank you, President Tamish. I just want to remind everyone in the public that the appointments, the current committee members, obviously, they don't all expire at the same time. But there are expiration dates coming up at the end of June. So if you're interested in serving on a board, committee, or commission, no seat is guaranteed. If you're on that chair, that you'll naturally be reappointed. Our process is if there isn't somebody that's come forward to serve, the person that's in the seat will be reappointed. But we want to make sure that we have the opportunity for new residents to help serve on those boards, committees, and commissions. You can get in touch with Cynthia Lovell. You could call her or email her. And we look forward to having new residents join us on our boards, committees, and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
Thank you very, thank you very much, President Tamish. I'd like to announce on behalf of Meeting House Farm, located in West Barnstable, that during the month of June, Meeting House Farm volunteers collect cans and bottles, the redeemables, at the Barnstable Transfer Station. Believe it or not, the annual can collection is the largest source of their income, but they can't do it without help. Please bring your cans and bottles to the booth at the end of the recycling area. And they're collecting each Friday through Monday over the weekend through the month of June. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further council discussion?
Okay. I would like to invite Chris Lawson from the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee to come up and present their report on the fiscal year 2026 operational budget. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, councilors. Chris Lawson, I'm the clerk of the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee. Our Chair, Hector Gunther, is here, as well as Lillian Wu, another very competent member of the committee. We recently completed the operating budget report for fiscal 2026. I was on that subcommittee along with Lillian, Tom Keen, and Chris King. I'm sure you all reviewed the report. I'm not going to go through it line by line, obviously. Going to just kind of do a broad assessment of some of the challenges and some of the recommendations that we made. And just as a first comment, I want to thank the Finance Department. Town of Barnstable has a fantastic finance department led by Mark Milne. Very steady and competent leadership for a number of years. Barnstable, despite the challenges we're facing moving forward, especially with CWMP and the School Department, which I'm going to get into, that leadership really has put us in a good position for a number of years. So we're well-equipped to deal with these things, but there are hard decisions that need to be made in the near future. To that end, you know, conservative revenue estimates over the years have allowed us to have a surplus year over year, usually. So for instance, coming up on fiscal '26, we have a $10.1 million surplus from the previous fiscal year that helps to balance the upcoming fiscal year. So that leaves a lot of leeway to help fund some of these things. But you're going to hear a theme here of staffing and funding challenges in a number of departments. And the School Department really is tantamount among those. And these comments I'm making aren't to criticize any departments. It's just the reality. I'm a product of the Barnstable Public Schools. I have three students, three children in the public school. So no one wants them to succeed more than I do. But it's in, the budget's in a precarious position. In the words of the superintendent, "The current budget structure is not sustainable." Chapter 78 from the state has become stagnant over the last couple of years. The school budget, even though it continues to go up every year, has not kept pace with inflation. There are significant staff cuts in the fiscal '26 budget. But it still isn't enough to make up the difference. There's over $3 million in reserves that are being used for the fiscal '26 budget for the School Department. Obviously, that's not sustainable. We've seen several years of significant reserves being used to balance the school budget. There's a number of reasons why these things continue to go up. We actually have reduced enrollment over the past five years. The student population peaked around 5,000 in fiscal 2020. It has dropped slightly every year. Since then, it's around 4,600 right now, I believe. But demographic shifts have been significant. So the services that students need have increased significantly, even though the population's dropped. And we're seeing significantly higher costs to educate per student. The elimination of the MCAS testing has presented a problem with no objective measure for school performance. The tests are still administered, but they're not required for graduation. So we're going to see certainly drops in performance, which we were seeing already. But that's not a good measure anymore for the performance of the schools. So there's a lot of things going on in the school system right now. There's a lot of budgetary challenges. And I'm going to go over some of our recommendations at the end. But the DPW and Police Departments both expressed difficulty with staffing. This has been expressed for a number of years in a lot of departments. But DPW and Police in particular have had chronic staffing issues. And of course, DPW with the CWMP project, they need a lot of professionals to fill different roles to make that project successful. And there's a lot of reasons why they have those challenges. Obviously, municipal government generally can't pay the same as private sector for some of these positions. So that's a challenge. They've done a lot of things to try to mitigate that. You know, DPW specifically with internship programs, promoting existing staff, increasing benefits like paid time off, things like that, where they can do that. But it hasn't been enough to solve that problem. And same with the Police. The Police face, you know, specific challenges related to the civil service requirement, which I understand the council is working on removing. That's one hurdle that they face. And then there's also the hurdle of housing, which the comments earlier are kind of prescient to what I'm going to say about that. Because the Chief of Police, when she spoke with CFAC, expressed that the housing that is available is not attractive or affordable to the recruits that they're trying to bring in for the Police Department. The apartment-style housing that's available is not what they're looking for, and it's not affordable for those individuals. So those are challenges that need to be addressed. I'll just briefly go over enterprise funds and fixed costs. Again, a lot of that stuff doesn't change year over year. Enterprise funds are generally doing well. They're self-sustaining. The Comprehensive Wastewater Management Program is the one exception to that, obviously. The Finance Department has come up with a funding model, which I'm sure you all have taken a look at. I hope you have at least. And I hope you play around with changing different metrics and that. That will be very useful as time goes on to monitor things that are happening kind of in real time with the budget of the town to see if there's a change to one budget item, how that will affect the rest of the town's budget. So that's a great model. I hope you all are utilizing that. And as CWMP moves forward, and additional money is going to need to be borrowed or brought in from other sources, that model will be key to understanding how that affects the rest of the town's budget. The fixed costs, as you all are aware of, but the public, you know, fixed costs have to be paid ahead of everything else. So the rest of the budget goes towards the general fund and the school. School gets 60%. General Fund gets 40%, but that's after the fixed costs are all paid. This year, I believe it's around 33% of the total budget. And we're seeing significant increases in the debt service, which again, is related to CWMP. So as we're moving forward, an additional money needs to be borrowed for that or for other programs. It's really critical that the Town Council and Town Administration considers how much money is being borrowed and when it's borrowed, and what the debt service of that borrowing is going to impact in the rest of the town's budget. So what are some of the things that can be done to address this? You know, that's what you all have to figure out, obviously. But CFAC took a look at some of these things. We're going to recommend that the 2022 fiscal policy evaluation is reviewed and updated based on economic conditions. That's something the council came up with at the time. But it, you know, economic situation has changed since then. So that needs to be updated and reviewed. And the CWMP funding specifically needs to be frequently reviewed and updated. And it's critical to identify new revenue sources to fund that. The total scope of the project is more than likely going to be well over $1 billion over the whole entire project. That money has to come from somewhere. It can't all be borrowed. We need to identify new revenue streams. As far as the schools are concerned, again, they're in a precarious situation. There's been cuts, the ESAR funding from the pandemic, that's all gone. State aid has been stagnant for several years now. It's recommended that possibly the council look at changing the 60% budget allocation. But obviously, that's a double-edged sword. If you increase that allocation, it takes money away from other programs in this town. A tax override is always a possibility, and it may be inevitable. No one wants to hear the "oh" word, but that may come to pass at some point. Lobbying for increased state aid, obviously, is something the town can do. But whether or not the state will make that a priority is yet to be seen. And then obviously, if cuts have to be made, that's kind of a last-case, worst-case scenario. We're already seeing that with significant staff cuts while we need more services in the schools. So we don't want to reach that point. And again, it's critical to identify additional revenue. And as I mentioned, the MCAS standards not being present anymore. The town, we're recommending that the School Committee come up with some other objective measure to monitor student performance. When you look at adjoining school districts, Sandwich, Mashpee, Sturgis, they're spending less per student and getting better results than Barnstable is. So there have to be underlying causes there. We need some kind of metric to determine our money's being well-spent. On the staffing challenges, it's been recommended, I believe last year when I presented this, we had recommended this as well, that, you know, the town review the pay scale of different positions that are in DPW, for example. Review that compared to the private sector. Make adjustments where possible to increase the pay, to attract more of these qualified candidates. Again, without additional revenue streams, that's taking away from something else to pay for that. But some of these things need to be done. And on, again, housing, it was a hot discussion a little bit earlier. Like I said, the Chief of Police specifically mentioned that the housing that's available is not what their recruits are looking for. So the town needs to address the housing situation. Whatever the answer to that is, is on you to come up with. But the general consensus seems to be that the apartment-style housing that's been promoted and promulgated is not what a lot of these people are looking for. And it's not affordable in the general sense. You know, starting at $2,500 a month, that's more than a lot of us pay for a mortgage every month. So that's not affordable to a lot of people just starting out. And it's something that needs to be addressed. So I'll leave it at that. If you have any questions about specific things, I'm happy to try to answer them. I know Mark has joined us as well, so he certainly can answer them as well.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Letky?
Absolutely amazing, Chris. Thank you. I've been waiting several years for a report like this. I know the Committee on Committees is going to be meeting with several of the committees. And I hope CFAC is one of the first ones we meet with. I love what you've done. You've really done a critical analysis. And critical doesn't mean bad. It means you dove into it, and you really looked at things. And I appreciate that. There's a very serious situation going on. So thank you so much. Beautiful presentation.
Thank you. Credit to the other committee members. Small part of it, but thank you.
Counselor Turkelson?
Thank you, President Tamish. Based on the recommendations of the committee, I don't know how it is, other than leadership takes that role. So I'm assuming you'll be reading the report and pulling out things that you feel need to be pushed forward. And I'm just hoping that you will take that report and push things forward, and that you'll let the council know what you and other leadership members have decided that we'll be doing. Just again, so it's not like private roads and public roads. It just goes into the darkness, and we keep rehashing it every year. Thank you.
Well, I think you know that I try not to rehash things. We will move forward.
Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Chris. I was very impressed with this report. Very thorough, very well-written. The charts are excellent. And in fact, it's, the whole situation with the schools is fascinating, given that there was that huge increase in state support. But, you know, if that doesn't continue, it then puts the pressure back on the general fund. So I can see that we're going to maybe reaching some conflict in the next few years in terms of how much we can continue the same level of services for our town municipal operations at the same time as trying to meet the needs of the school. And this gives us good information for any questions that we might have of the various departments as we proceed through the budget. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Clark?
Thank you very much, President Tamish. Thank you too, Mr. Lawson, for your comprehensive overview on your report. And I just would like to make sure it's on the record for the public that the CFAC report is on the town's website, very handy on the left side of the homepage. Forty pages of interesting reading. Thank you very much.
Yes, I should have mentioned that. Thank you.
Counselor Mendez?
Great report.
Thank you.
Fun reading it. I think, I think as a town, you know, let's be honest. Tax increases are probably coming. Let's be honest. You know, it's about time we started talking honest to people. So I think as a town, what I would like to see is how much property we've taken off the tax rolls in the last 10 years. That's what I would like to see. We're quick to do conservation. We're quick to take property off tax rolls. We're quick to take property off tax rolls. We have a big town that we need to afford. We cannot keep on doing the same things we're doing. It's just not going to work, especially with the CWMP. So that puts ancillary pressure on us. So we have to start looking at things holistically. We have to start looking things, at things as a business. We just can't have blank checks for prep projects and we, we, you know, for, we want to take this off the tax roll, we want this for conservation. We need people to live here. We need property on the tax rolls, because if not, our taxes are just going to steadily go up. So that's the choice we have. Either we pay more in taxes or we get more revenue other places. So that's what I like to see. In the last 10 years, how much money have we taken off the tax rolls and prop, and private property? That's what I like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Counselor Neary?
Thank you, President Tamish, and thank you, Chris, for your report and the CFAC committee. I'm always fascinated by the, the meetings and, and you're very direct and you, you approach these issues without prejudice, you know? It's kind of matter of fact. About a year ago, we had some discussions over our strategic planning, and there were some comments made about the verbiage of, you know, aggressively pursuing revenue, aggressively pursuing new tax dollars. And we constantly have to kind of wage this, it's a balancing act. I'm in business and it, I had an old friend of mine that said, you know, you need to increase sales and you also need to reduce costs and you have to do them both at the same time to really be successful. And it's really, really, really hard on a municipal level. Your report indicates pursue new streams of revenue, and it is very, very difficult, whether it be tax rolls, whether it be property taxes, whether it be, you know, things that come up that the town has to face, whether we, whether we would like them to happen or whether maybe the circumstances environmentally, whatever, you know, force its will on us. So again, I, I just always tried to, tried to balance the scale here on, in terms of what we're trying to do and what we're trying to, we hear, I can, I hope I can speak for everybody. We hear what the public says and we do our best to try to find a, a medium, a happy balance, a balance maybe that we can live with, you know, a good, they always say a good negotiation where, is, is one that both people on both sides aren't necessarily happy, but it's something that you reach a consensus in the middle. So I appreciate the, the report. I appreciate all that CFAC does for us and, and, you know, the staff and obviously my colleagues up here on the dais.
Thank you. Any further comment? I would like to just add also that, you know, CFAC is a independent voice, another set of eyes that looks at our budget, looks at the capital program. It's a group of citizens, as you mentioned. Hector Gunther is here, Tom Keen, Chris King, obviously you, Chris, Chuck McKenzie, Jeremy Shea, James Sprow, Lillian is here, and then you have your staff support. But I think it's critically important that we have some outside eyes looking at the budget, looking at our finances, looking at how we do things, and for that, I want to thank all of you. Tremendous amount of work.
Thank you very much.
And your liaison, Betty Letke? Who was at all the meetings also? Okay. Attorney LaRosa, were you going to give us an update on the Holtec situation?
Certainly. Good evening, counselors. Tom LaRosa, First Assistant Town Attorney. The Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station in Plymouth is closed and is the prop, is in the process of being decommissioned by Holtec Decommissioning International. In July 2024, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection issued two separate determinations concerning the closed power station. First, on July 18th, 2024, MassTEP's Division of Watershed Management issued a final determination denying Holtec's request for modified surface water discharge permit under the Massachusetts Clean Waters Act. That denial prohibited the discharge of wastewater into Cape Cod Bay. Holtec appealed that final determination by requesting an adjudicatory hearing at MassTEP's Office of Appeals and Dispute Resolution. Second, on July 19th, 2024, following a review regarding the state air pollution control regulations, MassTEP's Bureau of Air and Waste issued a determination finding that the ongoing evaporation of wastewater at the power station does not exceed the applicable threshold for an air quality plan approval and therefore is not subject to the state air pollution control regulations. The determination noted the applicable threshold for the mass of pollutants that may evaporate into the air over a 12-month period at 2,000 pounds. And MassTEP found that the mass of non-radioactive pollutants that have the potential to evaporate into the air from the power station over 12 months is 28.14 pounds. MassTEP, while acknowledging that radionuclides are under the jurisdiction of the Nuclear Regulatory Commission and therefore not subject to state regulation--
Excuse me, Tom, could you pull the mic down?
Sorry. Noted in 2023--
Thank you.
--that radioactive particulate and tritium releases were well below NRC standards. Because MassTEP definitively determined that the ongoing evaporation of wastewater did not require MassTEP approval, the town's attention has been focused on Holtec's appeal of MassTEP's denial of the permit modification for discharging wastewater into Cape Cod Bay. Apart from the town of Plymouth, in which the power station is located, the town of Barnstable is the only other municipality that has intervened in the appeal proceeding. The town has been working closely with the town of Plymouth and the Association to Preserve Cape Cod, which has dedicated substantial resources to the appeal to support and uphold MassTEP's denial. Next week, starting on Thursday, June 20th, the adjudicatory hearing will be argued before MassTEP in Boston. I will attend on behalf of the town attorney's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Attorney LaRosa? Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Attorney LaRosa. As many of you are aware, there has been initiatives across all the Cape towns and some of the Cape, excuse me, towns across the bridge, including Plymouth, to send a message to the governor's office that the radioactive evaporation is also not acceptable. And I believe those were overwhelmingly supported by the people who voted in the town meetings or the town elections. From what you are presenting to us today, do you have any recommendations for us to proceed with that type of communication to the governor or not?
At this point, we've been focused on the appeal. The MassTEP has prohibited the discharge of, of the water into the bay. That water has both an inseparable, non-radioactive and radioactive component. We've been focused, working closely with MassTEP, on the non-radioactive component because that's what's within their jurisdiction. Admittedly, they don't have jurisdiction of the radioactive component, as the federal NRC does have that jurisdiction. So we've been real, you know, in terms of whether to write or not write to the governor about something that's not within the state's jurisdiction, I'm not, you know, I couldn't really speak to what the governor could do because that's, that's at the federal level.
So I believe the town of Plymouth, it was on there, you know, they, they did support doing some communication.
Correct. Sorry.
And I know that there was some concern that if we did any intervention, it might have some impact on the appeal that we are in. So I, I'm just trying to understand the, the kind of technicalities here and, and our response as a community to this.
We've, we've been focused on working closely with our partners at the state level on what's within their jurisdiction to uphold DEP's denial of the discharge into Cape Cod Bay. We, you know, be somewhat concerned if we were, you know, then, you know, kind of working at cross purposes to divert, divert that attention to, you know, the radioactive component that's not within the state's jurisdiction.
There's, you know, if the town council decides to wait to take any action, it wouldn't prevent any citizen from putting or requesting a petition to be put on our ballot for this November.
If that's the course the people want to take, they're, they're certainly free to do so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Thank you. Excuse me. Counselor--
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, I don't know as much as, as Counselor Schnep knows about this stuff. So I want to go back to something you said, that the town of Barnstable was the only town to stand with Plymouth in, in what?
There, I know there's been a lot of activity in a lot of municipalities in southeast of Massachusetts and the Cape. When Holtec appealed Mass, appealed the MassTEP's denial of their discharge into Cape Cod Bay, APCC intervened in that proceeding, as did the town of Plymouth and the town of Barnstable. No other municipalities have intervened in the proceeding.
They weren't interviewed or they didn't--
They only, the only municipalities that intervened and have a seat within the, the appeal are the towns of Plymouth and Barnstable.
Okay.
A legal intervenor.
Thank you, and thanks for keeping up on this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you, counselors.
I would just like to clarify a point. Mr. Schwab alluded to 27, excuse me, 22 letters being sent to the town council. I just checked my email, there were a number of letters that were sent that I was copied on, but the request was to share them with the Conservation Commission. The letters were to the administrator of the Conservation Commission with a request that they be shared with the Conservation Commission. There was no request to share them with the town council, and that was not done. Okay? Thank you. Moving on to the orders of the day, old business. What I would like to do is take a number of items out of sequence. We have some different groups with us tonight, and with the consent of the council, I would like to take 2025-182, which is a CPC request for funding for the West Barnstable Train Depot. And Vice President Clark, if you could read that in, please?
Gladly. Thank you very much, President Tamish. This is item 2025-182, appropriation order in the amount of $978,000 for the preservation and restoration work at the West Barnstable Railroad Depot located at 2469 Meeting House Way, West Barnstable. This is a public hearing requiring a roll call majority vote of the full council.
Motion made and seconded. I recognize Lindsey Council, please.
Thank you, Council President Tamish. Lindsey Council, Chairman of the Barnstable Community Preservation Committee. At the February 24th, 2025, Community Preservation Committee meeting, the seven committee members present voted unanimously to recommend to the town council, through the town manager, the Department of Public Works' application for $792,000 in Community Preservation Act funds for preservation and restoration work at the West Barnstable Railroad Depot, which is under the control of the town pursuant to a 99-year lease from the Parker Lombard, Lombard Trust executed on October 1st, 2024. DPW's application for CPA funding seeks to address, to the extent funds will permit, the removal and salvage of the existing clay tile roof, repair of damaged structures due to water damage and rot, exterior soffit repair, installation of roof tiles, and window restoration as necessary. The DPW also plans on using capital funds for the design and installation of a mechanical system controlling indoor temperature and humidity. The West Barnstable Railroad Depot was built in 1910 and is an example of turn-of-the-century arts and crafts commission-style railroad depot and is one of the last remaining historic railroad depots on Cape Cod. This funding represents a portion of the total estimated project cost of $978,000, with capital improvement plan funding provided in the amount of $186,000. I believe Mark Marinaccio is here to give you more details.
I am here. Can you assume you can hear me?
Yes.
Thanks, Sarah, for starting that presentation. You can go to the next slide, please. So the Department of Public Works is requesting 792,000 in community preservation funding and 186,000 in capital funds for the restoration of the historic West Barnstable Railroad Depot. With total estimated cost of $978,000, the restoration aims to preserve a building of significant historic value. Located within both the Old Kings Highway Historic District and the West Barnstable Historic District, the building is listed as contributing structure to the National Register of Historic Places and recognized as a Massachusetts cultural, cultural resource. Completion of the project is projected to be in the fall of 2026. Next slide, please. In the mid 1800s and early 1900s, the railroad played a central role in shaping Cape Cod's development. Originally extended into Cape Cod in 1848 to serve the Boston and Sandwich Glass Company, the railroad allowed freight to reach Boston quickly and efficiently. By 1887, nearly the entire Cape was accessible by train, with service reaching 14 of the region's 15 towns. As demand grew, passenger service followed. In 1927, the Cape Codder Hotel introduced a sleeping car line that carried travelers from New York City's Grand Central Station all the way to Provincetown, with additional branches reaching Woods Hole and Hyannis. A decade later, daytime trains began running directly from Cape, from the Cape to New York City. However, in 1938, service to Provincetown had ended because World War II had disrupted service. And by 1964, the increase in domestic and dominance in highways led to the eventual closure of most passenger railway services. Location of the railroad depot, Meeting House Way in West Barnstable, was certainly the reason commercial businesses was developed and maintained in the vicinity. Built in 1911, the New England, the New Haven railroads, the station's arts and crafts mission-style architecture reflects early 20th century design of American train depots. The depot continued to operate for 105 years, ceasing passenger service in 1959. And next slide. As small-scale farming declined in West Barnstable, the railroad sparked a new era of local commerce. The station supported emerging industries, including the production of hats, leather goods, pottery, bricks, and furniture. It also played a crucial war, role in the resurgence of agriculture. The cultivation of cranberries, apples, and vegetables from West Barnstable and Marses Mills, as well as oyster harvests from Osterville and Catuit, were allowed a larger, more profitable market in Boston and New York. Wagons from all over the region traveled Meeting House Way to reach the station. Goods such as Maine potatoes, Boston dress fabrics, and wines, and building materials from across New England arrived by rail, connecting the Cape to regional trade networks. At one point, there was even a railway post office car as part of the train line, sorting and postmarking mail en route. The postmarks read "Boston and Cape Cod, RPO." In more recent decades, the depot served as an unmanned stop for Amtrak's Cape Cod service between 1986 and 1996. It also gained some cultural fame as a film location for The Golden Boys in 2008 and The Light Keepers in 2009. Today, it is an active summer stop for select excursion trains traveling from Hyannis to the Cape Cod Canal. Next slide, please. In 2001, the Cape Cod chapter of the NRHS leased the property and has been able to complete some minor repair work and maintained the original interior. They have been restoring it as a historic railway station and museum. Although the passenger shelters that once extended on both sides of the building no longer exist, the original fenestration roof and interior of the building are intact and deserving of preservation. Next slide, please. Preservation planning back to 2004 described the roof as mostly original and sound. Unfortunately, recent, in recent years, it has seen the emergence of leaks that have caused damage to the ceiling, fascia, and soffits. Despite the efforts of the NRHS to complete spot repairs, the required restoration work now exceeds their resources. Although the Cape Cod chapter of the NRHS has done well to perform spot roof and interior repairs, a long-term solution is beyond their technical and financial reach. We are proposing the following preservation work be completed on the project to ensure the building's weather tightness and continued use. The existing clay tile will be salvaged. It's been determined that matching tiles still exist and are available, and the broken tiles or components will be replaced with the new tiles that match the existing style and color. Damaged substructure will be replaced in kind and new underlayment installed and salvaged roof tiles reinstalled with copper nails and fittings. Water damaged interior soffits and fascia will be repaired. They will replace, depending on the level of damage, with matching materials, and water damaged interior ceilings will be repaired. Accessible walk will be installed to overcome the step to the front entry to make the building accessible, and windows and doors will be restored as deemed necessary. An HVAC system will be installed utilizing non-CPC funding. Next slide, please. These slides include photographs showing the building's current condition, rod of fascia boards, deteriorated soffits from water infiltration, slipping roof tiles, peeling, paraging, and areas in need of accessibility upgrades. These images clearly demonstrate the need for immediate preservation work. Next slide, please. Next slide, slide nine. One more. Boom, yep, very good. This project directly aligns with the Community Preservation Committee's historic preservation priorities, protects and restores a publicly owned historic property, preserves the cultural significance of Barnstable's railroad history, and enhances the architectural integrity of a structure located within two historic districts. The West Barnstable Railroad Depot remains a vital link to the town's past under the stewardship of the NRHS. The building not only honors its original function, but also serves the public as a museum and community landmark. The-- The proposed work ensures continued public access, preserves historic craftsmanship, and enhances the building's ability to serve as an educational and cultural resource. Last slide. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. I am going to have a process tonight for all of the public hearings. Because we have two counselors that are on Zoom, all votes have to be a roll call vote. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to announce the opening-closing of each public hearing without asking for votes to do that. But if any counselor objects at any time, then a vote will be taken to open and close the public hearings. Assuming there's no objection, I will open this public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this matter?
They have three minutes or two minutes?
Three minutes. Okay, anyone from the public want to speak? Yeah, yeah. You can step up to the mic. Just identify yourself, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Linda Zabel Pagnato. I am the current president of the Cape Cod Chapter of the National Railway Historical Society. We have been in this train station since 2001, and the former president of the chapter thought it was necessary to have a headquarters. And he was the realtor for Shaw's Supermarket. Well, he went and approached the town, and the town allowed a lease for the train station for $1 for 20 years. And the lease goes for 10 years, for 2012. And then I came on as president, and I asked for another lease for 20 years, to 2032. The chapter has taken care of this wonderful historic train station. Their dedicated, loyal train nuts that enjoy the railroad to promote and preserve anything that has to do with rail. And it is such a shame that they took away the tracks that go all the way down to Provincetown. But so be it. The chapter would like you to all to know we appreciate all of your hard work that you have done, especially Mrs. Clark and all of you that have taken this into consideration. I'm proud to say that of all the members that have worked hard, I have met wonderful people, just wonderful children that we do it for and for the visitors that come to West Barnstable. If you have any questions, if I can answer them, I will.
Thank you.
If anyone has any?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further public discussion? Lynn, is there anyone on? Okay. Seeing no further public discussion, I will close the public hearing. Counselor discussion? Any Counselor? Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, President Tamish. This is obviously a wonderful building and historic structure in our town, and I think it's definitely very worthy of preserving. I just had a couple questions. It's always unfortunate when water leaks cause damage, and you always think, is there something we could have done before that so that we wouldn't have sustained the damage that we have? But this is a fairly significant ask. It's a million dollars, but I haven't seen any breakdown of what actually is involved. I know that Mark did provide, you know, some. But Lindsey, is there a budget in terms of what actually is occurring with this property?
Yes, we've reviewed, you know, significant budget on this. Mark has that, I'm sure he could get it to you. They're item by item, every step along the way.
It's all regarding the exterior of the building?
Well, there's going to be some cross-work. Like you mentioned, the DPW side of the work is going to be to get some heating in there to balance the interior conditions. You know, the humidity and things really wreak havoc on these old buildings. So it's a very well-thought-out job, and it really will make a difference to its current appearance there. With those various posts that are holding up the corners, and those all are intended to be removed. So it'll be a significant improvement.
And will it be a phased job? Or is this a one-and-done? That once this expenditure occurs, we'll have a completed project?
I turn that over to Mark.
Yeah, it'll be a completed project. We're looking at the leaking roof and replacement of that roof or repair of the roof is the majority of the work. And then repairing the soffits. And then take a look at the structure, because those four corner posts on that extended roof are not original. So we want to remove those. But yeah, we'll be done.
And I had one more question, and it's for Linda that you mentioned that the public does have access. Do you have any specific hours and times that the public has access to the facility?
Yes, ma'am. We're hoping on.
Linda, you have to go to my side.
The chapter opens the station Saturdays from 9:30 to 1:30 for train rides and for the children and families to come and visit.
Is it open at any other time by appointment?
Yes, it is open for people who requested to be open. As a matter of fact, the town council will be visiting it at a meeting and holding a meeting there in August.
It's the West Barnstable Civic.
Oh, the West Barnstable Civic Association will be coming in. So we open it to people who request it. As a matter of fact, tonight and every Thursday night in the summer, the Cape Cod Mustang Club comes to the train station and lines up all their Mustangs with the hoods and trunks open. And you're welcome to come and visit them also. I want you to know, this is a 114-year-old station. And we don't want it to fall down. And even though we tried to repair roofing and the paper and plywood and the tiles, they're crumbling. And we've done all we can so far in the last 10 years to fix what we could. We actually repaired the asbestos flooring in the baggage room, the lobby, with NESN company came in and plasticked everything, and we moved everything, and they took it out. And we put in cement flooring ourselves for that. That was safe for safety. People come in to use the restrooms. People come in and they never knew that this was there. We had visitors from Hawaii last Saturday. It just is something that if it would be a shame to let go and lose. But I know that Mark Marinaccio and his crew have visited the station, looked over everything, and the roofing, the soffits, the doors and windows, it would be a great improvement and last another 114 years if you did the work.
Thank you. I appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Any further discussion on my right? Counselor Lutke?
Yeah, I wanted to say this is a wonderful project, and I completely support it. I see your signs out there on the weekends. I've gone on the scenic train rides, leaving from your station, and they're fantastic. I love how you coordinate with the railroad on that. It's a great thing. For those who haven't done it, I encourage you. You go, like you said, you go all the way to the canal. It's just beautiful. So this is a piece of our history we should and need to preserve. So I'm ready to vote for it right now.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on my left? Seeing none and nothing online. Just as a point of information for the council, seeing as we're putting close to a million dollars into this building, technically, it is owned by the Lombard Trust. And the land that it sits upon is owned by the Lombard Trust. But there has been some discussion whether the town perhaps should take the building over and be responsible for the building. So you may see that in the future. Okay? Okay, thank you.
There was a stall, if you would, from the last funding where the town had questioned who owned the building. And we've known for years that the town owned the building because we have a lease with them. But then it came up that funds were coming from the state. And the state wanted to know who owns the building and is it registered? And so the trustee, retired Judge Riordan, and the town made an agreement. Judge doesn't really own any buildings part of the Lombard Trust, but he agreed to own the building, but lease it back to the town, and then the town is responsible. And that's what happened in the last six months.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clark?
Counselors, Bloom?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Twelve, yes.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, I'd like to move up 2025-183, which is a CPC request for Crocker's Neck Road. And Counselor Schnep, I'll start on the right here, and we'll move through them. Counselor Schnep, would you read that in, please? 183.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of old business requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council. Item number 2025-183, appropriation order in the amount of $1,350,000 in community preservation funds for the purpose of acquiring a conservation restriction on 10.3 acres of open space at 30 and 31 Crocker's Neck Road in Catuitt. As written.
Second.
Moved to seconded, I recognize Lindsey Council, CPC.
Thank you very much, Council President Tamish. Lindsey Council, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. At the December 16, 2024 Community Preservation Committee meeting, the six members present voted unanimously to recommend to the town council through the town manager Barnstable Land Trust's application for $1,350,000 for the acquisition of a conservation restriction by the town of Barnstable from BLT on a total of 10.3 acres plus or minus of open space located at 30 and 31 Crocker's Neck Road, Barnstable. The CR would be granted on a 9.3-acre portion of a 9.61-acre property excluding the clubhouse structure and immediately surrounding land at 31 Crocker's Neck Road, shown as the Cessars Map 020, Parcel 097, known as the Catuitt High Ground Golf Course, and on a 1.01-acre property at 30 Crocker's Neck Road, shown as the Cessars Map 020, Parcel 093, Lot 001, providing parking for the golf course property. This vote would provide the town council's approval of the appropriation. The vote would also provide the council's approval of the CR, which is required under General Law Chapter 180, Section 32, and would authorize the council president to sign the CR on behalf of the council. Further, the town manager would be authorized to negotiate and accept the final CR substantially in the attached form and subject to the approval of the Massachusetts Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs. The CR has been reviewed by town staff and the Conservation Commission and has been submitted to EEA for review and approval. It is anticipated the EEA approval of the CR will be completed in the late summer 2025 in time for a project closing in October 2025. BLT has reached an agreement with the current owners for the purchase of the property with a short-term leaseback for golf use for a period of five years. Accordingly, the CR would allow BLT to continue golf course operations, including a lease to the golf course operator for a period of five years. The CR would allow BLT to request, prior to the expiration of the five-year period, an extension to the permitted uses of operating the property for golf purposes or engaging an operator to manage the property for golf purposes. Under the CR, an extension could not exceed five years and would be subject to the town's approval. Prior to the expiration or each extension, the CR would permit BLT to request a subsequent extension to continue golf course operations, with each subsequent extension not to exceed five years and subject to town approval. Should the town not grant an extension or should BLT decide to cease the use of the property for golf purposes, the BLT will consider alternative recreational uses, including walking trails, picnic areas, natural playscape, subject to the town's approval. Once the golf course operations cease under the CR, neither BLT nor the town could reauthorize golf as a permitted use. With us tonight is Janet Milkman from BLT with a few slides.
Good evening, Janet Milkman, Executive Director of the Barnstable Land Trust. I just wanted to address the earlier conversation this evening. I think it really highlighted the need to save what we can, especially in Hyannis. And we would love to be helpful in doing that. Still hopeful about the Twinbrooks parcel being conservation in some way, or part of it, anyway. But we're ready to help in Hyannis. And this project is different from any other project that BLT has done before in a number of ways. It was only we were only able to come to an agreement with the owner by agreeing that it should remain as a golf course for five years at least. And we were willing to do that because the community felt so strongly that it needed to be protected. It is such an important part of the community, not just as a golf course, but as a sledding hill. And the clubhouse has so many community events there. And it is really, really a beautiful parcel. So being able to save almost 10 acres in the heart of what is a really quite densely-developed part of town is really a great opportunity for us. It's very expensive. The total purchase price is $2.7 million. So it was a bigger ask for CPC than we typically come for. And one of the reasons for that is because we're not eligible for state funding because it's a golf course. And it's remaining a golf course. So we are going to match the 1.35 CPC funding with 1.35 million in private funds. Ultimately, it will stay a golf course for some period of time. The current family person running it is going to stay involved, which is really helpful. We will not be involved in the management of it. It also will not be coming off the tax rolls as long as it's a golf course. So that's also different from many of our projects. And I think, once it is no longer a golf course, I think we have the opportunity for some really important nutrient reduction for shoestring and pop and eset bay, which are heavily nutrient-impacted. So I think that's all I have to say, and happy to hear any questions.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to open the public hearing at this point. Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard here in the there's somebody online. Seeing no one here. Lynn, we have an online?
Yes, we do. It's Fran Park. Fran, you have three minutes. You may unmute.
You're still muted? Thank, there you go.
You hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanted to say that I support this project. And, you know, I think that when people hear that you want to save a golf course, this is a nine-hole course that's basically in a kettle hole. So it's not, you know, not like any of the other golf courses in town. And it's very challenging. It was to me when I was growing up and trying to learn to play golf, which I failed at. I was very good at sliding in the wintertime. But I think, to the best of my knowledge, the only other CPC funds that Catuitt has requested has been for the historical society. So I think this is an important piece of land to preserve. And that's all. Then I hope everybody votes for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Quick question for you. Now, this is kind of a unique situation I don't think we've seen before. It's going to be a golf course for at least five years, and then there's a possibility of an extension for another five years on top of that?
With approval of the town.
With approval of the town. And the clubhouse is not included in the purchase, is that correct?
It is included in the purchase. It's not included in the conservation restriction.
Okay, okay. My next question was going to be, what did they plan to do with the clubhouse if it was not included? Okay. So we're buying it now and really won't have ownership, well, we'll have ownership, but perhaps more control is a better word, for possibly 10 years?
Well, I mean, the town could say five years is enough. That was part of the negotiation with the town about the conservation restriction. So, the project wouldn't happen. We wouldn't have been able to acquire it if it couldn't stay a golf course. That was the way of keeping it open and keeping the possibility of conservation available.
Okay. So it's just delayed conservation?
Yes, delayed conservation never our first choice to own a golf course. It is, it's a different kind of project. It's community recreation, as opposed to sort of community open space.
Okay.
I would think about it that way.
Thank you. Any discussion on my left? Councillor Mendez?
Just so I'm clear. Golf course for five years, and the town has an option of renewing for five years?
We, the town has the option of giving BLT the permission to renew for another five years.
What if BLT doesn't want to renew for five years?
We don't have to renew.
Okay. This is precisely the stuff that I'm talking about.
Yeah.
We're taking more land off the tax rolls, where we're over here talking about tax increases. I think that personally, I would love to preserve it as a golf course. I grew up on that golf course, so I'm very fond of that golf course. But we have to start thinking holistically as a town, how much of this we can actually afford. How many walking trails do we actually need? Do we need services, or do we need walking trails? Now, if it's, I think, I'm in the mind that we do things that are revenue-driven, that produce revenue for the town. We're not in a position anymore, especially with the wastewater, to be spending millions of dollars willy-nilly. We're not. We have to look at things holistically and realistically. Every town department is short of staff. We have to start raising salaries. These millions of dollars we're spending for walking trails has to come from someplace. And we're going to have to explain to our constituents why we're spending money like this. We cannot afford it anymore. This isn't 20 years ago. We can't. We need to start doing things that produce revenue for this town, plain and simple. If it was going to be a golf course for 15 years, that's fine. But we have to look at it holistically and what we're taking away from the town as far as tax rolls go. We have to look at it that way. Thank you.
Just as a clarification, this is CPC funding, so it's... Further discussion on my left? Councillor Neary?
Thank you for the presentation. Ms. Milkman, was, I think the owners, didn't the owners have some intent at one point of actually developing this property or selling off the parcels? Does that, would that ever come to light?
It was on the market. It was on the market. I mean, it's been in the family since 1950, I think, since the 50s. And the current generation has decided they can't afford to keep it anymore. So, it was on the market for a while.
If I may, some of the, I guess, scuttlebutt, for lack of a better word, I heard out in town was that there may have been some concerns about actually getting divisible lots, I think, on that parcel. Is that, did you?
We had an appraisal. It's a, it's a difficult, it's a difficult parcel. I think our appraisal was four or five buildable lots. So it could have been four or five housing lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Leveque?
Thank you, President Tamish. Appreciate it. So, just to kind of piggyback on what Councillor Mendez was asking. So, after five years, town can approve to extend. Barnstable Land Trust doesn't have to extend. I think some of the feedback I'm getting here is that the public or an entity of some sort wants it to continue as a golf course.
Yeah.
So would they have any input after five years? Or would it just be?
The community definitely will have input. I mean, that's why we're buying it.
But like you've already said, BLT's typical mission is not to do this.
That's right.
So if the board decides at BLT that, no matter what the public input is, we don't want to do this any longer, if that's how it's going to go?
They could, although, you know, we're a community organization.
Understood, yeah. And I'm not saying, I'm not pitting, I'm not pitting anybody for that, but there's really no guarantee that the will of the people of Kootenai would necessarily be followed through with, right?
Well, I mean, we're buying it for them, so.
Yeah.
You know.
But it may not...
I really hope it, I really hope it works. I really hope it's a successful, continues to be a successful operation. It is a gem, and I invite you all to come see it.
What happens if, I'm sorry, follow-up question? Thank you. What happens if this operator wants to decide they don't want to move forward? Could another operator take over?
Potentially.
Okay. Would they have, would there be a business to sell with that? Or would it be BLT's decision to work out an agreement? How would that work?
Yeah, we'd have to work out an agreement with them. Yeah.
All right, thank you for that.
Any discussion on my left? Councillor Schnep?
Thank you, President Tamish. Kind of following on that train of thought, and also to, Councillor Mendez's concern that the tax revenue would come off the books, basically, if this was sold to an, or purchased by a nonprofit. It's about, with the two parcels, about $12,000 right now, so it's not, you know, it's, you know, money. So I'm not saying anything about that. If it's going to be continued as a golf operation, where does the revenue go for that? Does that, does BLT benefit from that? I mean, can you have a going business concern that?
We don't, we will not benefit. The only revenue that we're getting is for the taxes that we're going to have to continue to pay.
Oh, you...
The property taxes.
Oh, so you will...
Because it's not coming off the tax rolls.
Okay.
As long as it's a golf course, it is not coming off the tax rolls.
Okay.
So the only revenue that we will get from the business is that and to cover insurance that we have to have. So the business gets the revenue. We just cover our costs.
So is that how the CR is written? That as long as it's a golf course, it continues to pay property taxes? But once it isn't, then?
The CR has nothing to do with property taxes.
Okay.
The CR just allows certain uses on the property and prohibits other uses. That's what a conservation restriction does, is say, there will not be, you know, there will only be allowed this kind of development and this kind of use. So it is allowing for use as a golf course, but not use as a Dairy Queen, for example.
Now, Councillor Burdick is not here tonight, but as a neighboring village, I can attest to the benefit of the sledding during the winter, but I'm not a golfer, so I can't speak to that. It's a beautiful parcel, but I understand some of the other concerns, but perhaps if it continues as a golf course, we're not going to lose revenue, so.
Councillor Ludke?
Thank you. I'm intrigued by this, and I know Janet and I was there, maybe it was four years ago that you made the presentation to the Cape Cod Commission, and you talked about the preservation of agricultural, recreational, and institutional land. And it's nice to see that coming to fruition here with a different kind of an animal. And it's nice to see you being nimble and able to do that. And I understand, Councillor Mendez and Councillor Tamish, this is community preservation funds, and that's given by the taxpayers. The taxpayers voted for that and want to support that, and this is one of the things that comes from that. So I think it's wonderful, and I do have a question about this Atlantic White Cedar Swamp. Those are quite rare, aren't they? I mean, what is, it looks tiny, but is it viable and healthy? I mean, how many of these are there around?
Not an ecologist, but they are a really important indigenous ecosystem, native ecosystem. So, yeah, it's something you really want to protect.
Yeah. No, and you mentioned the density out there, and the sewer is not getting out there for some time. So I think this is a wonderful project. And, you know, I made the comment earlier that we're always out in Merson's Mills and Kootenai buying property, and why don't we do it in Hyannis? I hope we do. I hope we do, but it doesn't mean I don't support these. It means I wish in Hyannis we could do the same kind of due diligence and protect some things that are precious, like the Cedar Swamp and some other things. So, I support this entirely.
Thank you. These are the big parcels that are left, are the golf courses, the Cranberry Boggs Farms. Yeah.
Councillor Bloom?
Thank you, President Tamish. I was lucky to, lucky enough to live there for four years underneath the golf courses in apartment. I mean, a couple of pals, you know, we lived there. And, and, you know, it was a great place for the neighborhood to gather. And I can't really see it being anything other than a golf course and a place for the locals to gather. And Jack Hare was my landlord. He was a great guy. And it was, you know, every weekend, there was a great bunch of people. I could hear their cleats, you know, clicking on the ceiling, and I knew it was time to get up. And, but, you know, it's a lovely, it was a lovely place, and I'd love to see it preserved. But I would, I would, I wish there was some way it could be guaranteed to be a golf course in perpetuity. But without that guarantee, I think, you know, I'll still vote for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Clark?
Thank you very much, President Tamish. And I do agree with Councillor Mendez that we should be looking at parcels holistically. But I put forward that I serve with Councillor Neary and Councillor Starr on the town's Comprehensive Wastewater Management Planning Committee. And a large parcel like this provides environmental services that has value. It displaces development that has caused stressors in that part of our town. Having worked for the Town of Barnstable in the shellfish department, I can tell you that the Shoestring Bay section of our town has got the worst, worst water quality. It's impaired for shellfishing, and it's probably got three or four feet, maybe taller than I am, what do I want to say? A distance of mayonnaise-type of degraded substrate. So I think that preserving parcels like this provides environmental services, contributes to lessening the pressure on our wastewater remediation, and it also sustains property values in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clark.
Councillors. Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
No.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Did she say yes or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Eleven, eleven yes, one no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It is 8:24. We will be in recess for 10 minutes. Okay, we will resume again with the forbearance of the council. I would like to take 2025-184 out of order. And if, Councilor Turkelson, if you could read that in, please. Page 60.
Thank you, President Tamish. This is an item of whole business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council. It is item 2025-184, appropriation order in the amount of $2,900,000 for preservation and restoration work at the Hyannis Armory located at 225 South Street in Hyannis, as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I recognize Lindsey Council, Chairman of the CPC.
Thank you very much, Council President Tamish, Lindsey Council, Chair of the CPC. At the April 28, 2025 Community Preservation Committee meeting, the six committee members present voted unanimously to recommend to the town council, through the town manager, the Department of Public Works' application for $2,900,000 in Community Preservation Act funds to begin revitalization work on the Hyannis Armory building, which is owned by the town. DPW plans on undertaking work on the exterior building envelope, including addressing masonry repairs, windows, doors, ornamental wall, mounted flagpoles, signage, as well as the necessary abatement of hazardous materials. I believe we have Mark Maranaccio still with us to give us a presentation.
Thanks, Lindsey. Thank you, council members, Mr. President. I'm Mark Maranaccio, town architect, Department of Public Works. The Department of Public Works is seeking $2.9 million in funding to complete exterior restoration work for the Hyannis Armory. Designed by notable Cape Cod architect Walter Gaffney and constructed in 1958, the armory originally served the Massachusetts National Guard as a training facility, equipment stores site, and administrative offices. This building serves as a typical, typical example of armories constructed during the Cold War. Their design emphasized functional spaces resulting in a very symmetrical, flat, rectangular building with raised bands of windows allowing light into the drill hall, single-story administrative wings front or flank the main hall. The Hyannis Armory became additionally significant in November 9, 2060, the day after the presidential election, President-elect John F. Kennedy delivered his acceptance speech inside this very building, an important moment in American political history. Today, the armory stands as a cultural landmark listed individually on the Massachusetts Historical Commission website and located within the Hyannis Waterfront Historic District. Have next slide, please. Just hours before polls closed, John F. Kennedy received a concessions telegram from Vice President Nixon. At 1:45 PM, joined by his wife, parents, and siblings, Kennedy addressed the nation. He read aloud messages from President Eisenhower and Vice President Nixon before delivering a speech that set the tone for his presidency. In his words, "There is a general agreement by all our citizens that a supreme national effort is needed to move this country safely forward through the 1960s. All our energies will be devoted to the interests of the United States and to the course of freedom around the world." Next slide, please. Currently used by various town departments for cold storage, the building is deteriorating. Steel window and door lintels have corroded, causing cracks in the masonry. Masonry walls have cracked due to water infiltration and corroded steel expansion, allowing more water into the system. The flat roof leaks, further endangering the structure. Steel windows are corroded and at risk of failure. Asbestos caulking on the exterior joints have failed, allowing additional water intrusion." Next slide, please. Scope of the work includes exterior masonry restoration, replacement of corroded steel door and window lintels, replacement of all exterior windows and doors, flat roof replacement with associated flashings, hazardous materials abatement. This work is necessary to weatherproof and stabilize the building. Next slide. In FY19, the town council appropriated $867,175 for asbestos materials abatement and adaptive reuse design and construction documents. Since then, an architectural and engineering team was hired to complete abatement and rehabilitation documents. The building's interior asbestos has been abated to the greatest extent possible. Contaminated soil in the crawl space has been removed. Next slide, please. Old heating systems and asbestos pipe insulation were eliminated. Armaments left behind by the National Guard and discovered during abatement operations have been removed. Next slide, please. This funding request focuses on exterior restoration, masonry, windows, doors, and roof, making the building weather tight and ready for its next chapter. This project directly aligns with the goals of the Community Preservation Committee by preserving Barnstable's character. The armory is a stop point on the Kennedy legacy trail, protecting a threatened historic resource, leverages an existing town asset rather than funding costly new construction, and continues various, continues previous investments and efforts already made by the town. Next slide, please. Project timeline, design and phase should be completed this summer of 2025. Construction would start spring of 2026 and close out in the fall of 2027. Next slide. I do have a budget slide, slide following this, if you're interested, just as I did on the previous one. But I can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I would like to declare the public hearing open. Is there any from the public that would like to be heard? Seeing no one, anyone online? All right, I will close the public hearing. Council discussion. Anyone on my right? Council Ludkey?
Yes, I think this is a very important building to preserve. And again, here we are in Hyannis with our community preservation funds preserving some history. We have a lot of history in Hyannis. We may not have the preponderance of the open space, but we have a lot of history here, and most of it's in the form of buildings. And we've seen far too much from the developer's side of demolition by neglect. I see it over and over as I watch the Main Street Historic Commission meetings. Darn the luck, this is blighted. We have to demolish it. Gosh, how did that happen? And I think it would be a complete embarrassment for the Town of Barnstable to allow this to happen to this building. This is an important part of history. The opportunities in this building are enormous. I had a meeting some years ago when Elizabeth Jenkins was still here, Mark Milne was there, he may have recalled this, where I brought in someone who had worked projects, I think in Worcester and some other areas, and she said this was such a golden opportunity to do some credits. It's a very complex financial piece, but because of the historical nature of the building, the environmental justice communities, we can do some incredible things with this to, you know, Councilor Mendez talks about, you know, tax rolls and things. We can do some amazing things with this building. And gosh darn, I will vote for this because I will not contribute to another demolition by neglect. And we need to do this now. It's only going to be more expensive the longer we wait, and it's a, it's a precious part of Hyannis history. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Penn?
Yes, thank you, President Tamish. I just want to say, as an elementary school student at the time in 1960, they walked us from Hyannis Elementary, because there was no East and West Elementary at the time, there was just Hyannis Elementary School, down to the armory, gave us each an American flag. We lined South Street as the motorcade came and waved our flags, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a very historic building. It definitely needs to be preserved. It's been used for community things since then, and I'm thrilled that the exterior is going to get a redo, so it doesn't look so neglected. So thank you for this. That's all.
Thank you. Any discussion on my left? Councilor Mendez?
I understand the historic significance of the building, but my question is, what are we going to use it for? Is this building worth $3.7 million, considering what we put into it in 2019? These are the questions we have to ask ourselves. Yes, we all want to preserve it. Yes, I'm from here, several generations and all that stuff. But again, we have to think about priorities. Is this building worth $3.7 million? And what is the town going to use it for? To me, $3.7 million isn't good for cold storage. It's just not. If we have something we're going to use it for, great, let's do it, let's preserve it. But $3.7 million is what we're going to spend on this building now. And we all know how construction cost goes, 2.9 now. Again, we talk about tax increases, we're talking about cutting services, that's what's coming down the line, so these are the decisions we need to make.
Thank you. Councilor Lebec?
Thank you, President Tamish. I don't know if somebody can answer this question, but what is this currently, what's the permitted use, if all things considered? Does anybody have that question answered at all, with the permitted use on that? I don't want to mention names or whatever, I'm just looking around. Thank you, Commissioner Florence, I appreciate that. I was going to defer to either one of the town manager, assistant town manager.
We're not going to mention any name, Dave Anthony.
Yeah, exactly, that too, or?
Good evening, Council President and members of the town council. As a municipal building, it's pretty much exempt, so there's a lot of things you can do there municipally-wise.
I thought, and again, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I did think at some point there was like permitted uses, there was like a museum, and the council went through a process to approve it of being used as a museum, because there was, at one time it was being considered for the Widder Museum, I believe it was. And again, I think it's important, I think what Council Mendez is getting to is a little bit of a history lesson of what can we do with this building? We've talked, I think some talk has also been made about using it for the, you know, the arts of some sort, again, museum slash, kind of what we're, the partnership we have with the cultural center or something like that. Again, maybe not a question that you might answer, but?
I'd be happy to do a review for you and get that information to you, but right off the cuff, as I said, a municipal use is exempt, it's an exempt use.
Excellent, I appreciate that. And I think, you know, again, Council Mendez, you bring up a good point. Honestly, I think the 3.7 that you're talking about, the 2.9 currently, doesn't even get it to the point where we can actually use it, other than currently what we're using it for now. So I think the whole price tag is about $10 million to get it where we need to, to preserve it and then make it useful. So it, again, I'm not saying it's not worthy of preservation, and it's, it is something possibly that we can use. I believe the Symphony was also looking at this as a possible location for Symphony Hall at one point. So it's been considered for a lot of different things, but I, I think if we, to get too far into the weeds, we need to have a definite use defined for it before we get too far.
Mr. Santos?
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I just thought I'd speak and shed some light on this from the historic perspective of the project. So this is just part of a larger project that was submitted and approved by the council 2019? You know, Mark remembers exactly, but the, the vision for this building was part of a larger town campus here. So moving 200 Main Street activities here to the campus in Town Hall in 200 Main Street. And the vision for the armory, councilors that were here at the time may remember, new councilors may not know this, so I think this is probably of some value to you, of the vision of the armory was a new, state-of-the-art, larger hearing facility, town hearing facility. You know how much competition we have for meeting space in town? So this was to, and Mark's putting some pictures up of that vision right now, having a larger, state-of-the-art meeting space, and then moving the, among other things, but primarily the town council office is there, the town manager's office there, and the town attorney's office there. And that would free up room in this building to move other functions from 200 Main Street and have our entire town administration on this one campus. So that's, that's in, very briefly, the vision. The town council appropriated funds for the design of this The Town Council appropriated funds for the design of this vision, and in fact, we have designed this project. It is 100% design right now. The first step was to go to the Community Preservation Committee to seek funds, because those are funds that we could use on this project for this, this aspect of it. The exterior restoration was appropriate for historical funding. And so we moved ahead with that, because that needed to get done absolutely at a minimum before you did anything with the building, get this envelope secured, get the, get the place saved from deterioration, and then move into the next phase and trying to seek other funding sources, grant funding, the manager can speak to that. We've gone to the state, we've sought different avenues for funding to accomplish this vision, but ultimately, of course, it can change, but that's, that's the project that was developed and where we were going with all this. So hopefully that helps as you consider this project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Ovek?
Just a quick follow-up. Thank you for that, Dan, and just, thank you Administrative Assistant Cynthia Lovell for bringing this to my attention, but the, the item that you're speaking of for the design was item 2018-063 from February 15, 2018. Paul, Paula, we were councilors for three months, and eight years ago. And so that was to 2175 for that design that you just mentioned, so thank you for that. I think it was just important to get that perspective on that, of the design of what we were talking about in the, in the vision casting. And like you said, I know, I remember there being earmarks or bond issues, talks about that type of at the state level, that we were hoping to get, but the checks were never written. So here we are. So thank you for that, appreciate your time.
Counselor Mendez?
So, Director Santos, are you saying this is the vision? This is what they're trying to do? Or is this one of the things that they're trying to do? Because, and I'll tell you why, because I think we're putting the cop before the horse. I think before we decide if we're going to preserve the outside, we need to figure out what we're going to do with the inside, come up with a budget of what it's going to cost us, so we can make a proper decision if it, if the juice is worth the squeeze.
Yeah, absolutely. We have a budget. This, this is the, this is, we spent money to design in accordance with this vision at the approval of the council at the time. And so this is, right now, if we had the money to build this, we could go out to bid. This is at that point. So I, if you want to see the budget, we can talk about the budget, and that's affiliated with this.
I can, I can interject a little bit too, Dan, if I'm still on. I know, you know, this project really got developed out of the building and a lack of interest in the building at the time, or interest that was in the building for various reasons, but because of the condition of the building, people backed out of it. So the first incremental step was doing some hazardous materials abatement in the building that has been completed. We then kind of moved this idea down the road. Incrementally, the next step would be the exterior restoration of the building to, to make it watertight. That takes us another step down the road. Anywhere along those, those, those routes, the Town Council could change direction and decide to do something different with the building, but to date, this has been the only design and the only idea that's really gotten traction to this point. But we've been stepping incrementally in this project until there is a conclusive determination of what the Town Council wants to do with this building.
Okay. Just one second, let me just let councilors that haven't spoken yet. Counselor Schneff?
Thank you, President Tamish. Yes, I was part of the gang of three that was part of this original discussion, and I think the seven-year lapse in, in the, you know, having this discussion back at the full council makes me hesitant to approve a $3 million expense for something that we really don't have that same vision that is shared among the council, because, you know, it hasn't been part of our strategic planning, it hasn't, it's not to say that it can't happen, but I'm looking at some of the expenses that we have had at Town Hall, future expenses we have to have, I mean, in this structure. And then I'm looking at that structure, and, and we're talking millions of dollars without necessarily knowing how we're using those spaces. So I feel tonight's ask is a little premature for me to, to make that commitment. At the same time, I understand we don't want to wait that long, because we don't want the building to deteriorate any further, but a $3 million ask is a fairly significant investment. And I wish there was some way to preserve the historic significance of this, the event that happened at this building without necessarily preserving the building, because, I mean, I, I look at it and I'm like, it feels like an albatross. It's not a particularly attractive building. The inside is a disaster, and I, you know, obviously with millions of dollars, it could, it could be a centerpiece, and, but that's something that we have to discuss. We also have made a commitment to look at a parcel on the water that is possibly going to flood, and so, and that would be millions of dollars. So I think the Town Council needs to take some responsibility, it's not the staff, it's us, to really be looking at, you know, what we want to do with our, our town assets and what the future looks like. Are we going to have a remote workforce? Are we going to have, you know, are we going to, there's, there's a lot here. And again, if somebody wants to make a persuasive article that we have to do this now, I might reconsider, but I think this is something I'd rather have come back to us after we've had this larger conversation.
If I could, this, this funding is CPC funding to preserve the building. I mean, the building is deteriorating, you know, irrespective of what the plan may be three, five, seven years down the road, we still have to make the building watertight and preserve the building. Counselor Turklez?
Thank you, President Tamish. I just have two questions. Is this building of, of, on a historic register of some sort? Did I miss that piece?
Mark?
The, the building is listed on the Massachusetts Historical Commission as a, as a resource that contributes to the historic district, not because of the age, but because of the event that occurred there.
So legally, what is the line about if, if we let this building deteriorate? I mean, are we, are we allowed to take this building down? I mean, you know, is there, is there, you know, we talked about the historic facade over at the church, and, you know, the people bought that property, and then we were told, they were told it wasn't historic, and then it was, and they had to finagle saving this piece of the building. Is this the same situation where we would be required to be saving this building? And if, if that's the case, then we need to spend the money now or later? That's just one thought. And secondly, in this vision that we're seeing of a, an event hall, is this something the town could monetize? You know, part of the complaint was maybe we're losing space down at 32 Scudder Ave. Is this, is this potentially a place where we're going to be having conferences and we would monetize this asset? Or is this, this space that we're seeing in the picture just for our general use? I'm just wondering if this is like a community thing we're going to be renting out and monetizing, or just keeping for ourselves?
No, there, there was never any discussion about monetizing the facility, so it would effectively be a, a modernized town, town space, where the community would have hearings and meetings as, as we use the space. I think Brian can answer the second question you had.
As it relates to demolishing a building, President, demolishing the building, a building can be demolished, but first it would get reviewed as to its age. If it's over 75 years old, the Historic Commission has, there's a demolition delay ordinance here in Barnstable, so it could be delayed up to a certain amount of time, but ultimately, a building can be demolished regardless if it's on the historic register.
And along the lines of Counselor Mendez's comments, I think in previous meetings we discussed, the high school auditorium is, is the ability to monetize an asset. Maybe that's something we want to consider if we're going to be having this asset. I don't know if we're able to do that, but again, it's, it's thinking more like a business rather than just like a municipality. And we'd be spending a lot of money, and to keep it just for ourselves and not make it a community-wide opportunity seems, seems like a waste of space. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boom?
Thank you, Mr. President. I see this beautiful design you have for the building. It looks great, but what kind of parking do we have over there? I mean, it, it seems like there's, a lot of parking would be needed for functions at this place, and I'm not sure how much parking there is. I mean, we could, you have, you have parking on this side of the street, but, you know...
Right, the, the parking we have at, at the moment is the parking that you see. We have put in a project in the past, and part of this vision was the potential of putting a parking garage out here where our Town Hall parking is, but that, that hasn't gone anywhere, but that was part of the thinking to increase parking. But there's been a number of parking studies done over the years, which have determined that there's adequate parking in Hyannis for, for the needs. And again, we're not trying to attract new uses, we're simply consolidating uses we have, so the need for parking wouldn't be as great as I think you might be worrying about.
Any further discussion on my right? Counselor Neary?
I'm not finished yet, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Boom?
I know there's adequate parking, there's a lot of parking in, in the town of Hyannis, in the village of Hyannis, but it, it doesn't seem to be, there doesn't seem to be an awful lot, like with, within a short distance of, of the building. And I'm, I'm not sure the parking is adequate for it.
Okay.
I, I can address a little bit of that. I mean, we're talking beyond what the scope of, of this proposal was, but if with the vision of town offices there, you're not increasing the number of parking needs that were there. If it was a private organization that was coming in and doing a museum or a theater, they would have to do a park analysis and determine how the parking was going to work there. But basically, what we're doing is we're moving spaces out of Town Hall to create additional space in Town Hall for expanded services.
Are you done, Counselor Boom? Yossef? Yossef? Okay. Counselor Mendez?
Thank you, President Tamish. I feel a lot more comfortable seeing the whole plan, start to finish, what it's going to cost, what the projections are. I don't feel comfortable, you know, supporting $3 million if we don't know if we're going to do the interior. I need to see a budget. I need to see what's going on before I say, okay, let's do $3 million. $3 million is a lot of money, especially if I don't see a, a clear budget on what exactly we're going to do with the building.
Counselor Neary?
Do you want, do you want, Mark?
Town Manager Els.
Go ahead.
Jump right in, Mark.
Whichever.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mark Els, Town Manager. I think that for the benefit of the council to be able to make a complete, comprehensive sort of assessment of what we're proposing to do here with this piece of it, we may want to step back into a workshop format and have a presentation that looks totally at use. This project is needed, it does have merit. Each time that we have, and we've been, I think when I was at Public Works, the town, you know, took this, took this property from the state for a minimal amount of money, knowing that it was at the end of its useful life, but felt that it was a, a critical parcel for us to hold. We vacillated on whether it would be public space or municipal space, or maybe private space. To make a good decision, all of those aren't options for us. We're limited in what we can use that, that space for, and that's in the, the deed that we took from the state when we took over the parcel. We had one exception to that. At one point, we were looking at a for-profit museum in there, the legislature revoked it and allowed one thing other than municipal use, and I'm simplifying all this. Tom LaRosa could come up here, but you should have the benefit of hearing all this detail before you have to make this decision. The vote of the CPC is, will stand as its recommendation to proceed. The exterior envelope does need to be maintained, and we talked about a roof and how we could reach a point where it's leaking. We're reaching that point with this building, meaning the physical structure needs, needs to have work. We all know over time, these numbers just go up. So I think, I'll, I'll sit with, I'm comfortable with a withdrawal of the item, rather than to get a negative vote on this, so that we can come back to the council to have a workshop and better inform on the entire picture and allowable uses there, and then to bring it back forward, but I, I'm concerned about cost and time, and we know that it's a, it's at a deteriorated point. That's why we brought it forward to you now. We also assume that the council wants to continue to hold ownership of this parcel moving forward. Now, you should never assume. I think we need to have that discussion. So, and it's been a while, I mean, I, I don't know how many years, and I know we talked about it regularly for a while, but the problem is from day one, we took over an asset that was the, at the end of its useful life, it was millions of dollars at that time, and that number has only grown as everything has over time. So I would be, you know, as Town Manager, I am comfortable if that is something the council would like to do at this time, and, but I, there is, there is a timeliness to a decision on this. Okay?
Okay. Is it the sense of the council that they would, A, either have this withdrawn or continue it perhaps to August for a further flushing out of it, but it, we, we will, yeah. Counselor Penn? Counselor Penn?
Yes. I, I just think that this building is strategically located for the purpose of serving as the home for our municipal government. I mean, obviously, it was voted in 2018 by the then-Town Council to have this vision for, for have, for having our government cohesively located between two buildings versus, with not a whole bunch of space in between versus the way it is now with 200 Main, which is, which is another issue. I'd rather hold a, a workshop on 200 Main and the uses of that, assuming that this, this is going to become a mainstay of our campus going forward for our administration. You know, it was voted in 2018, why change now? I mean, obviously, staff has been working toward this internally. We heard from Mr. Santos, we heard from Mr. Marinaccio, pardon me if I butchered your name. I think the need is greater than ever, and it's the perfect use for CPC funds. So I think if we're going to do a workshop, do it on 200 Main, and let this proceed and fulfill the vote that was already taken seven years ago.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ledke?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that, and again, reinforce, these are CPC funds, this is Hyannis, this is a perfectly legitimate use for it, and it is just the exterior shell to make it watertight, regardless of what's going on inside, and again, we have a very good plan. I think to delay this, it just becomes more expensive and more damage happens, unless people just think they want to get rid of this building, which I, I hope, I hope you don't. It's really a piece of Hyannis, so I, I don't know. I, I see it so clearly that we do this work, and then the rest of it can be done. I see us going on and on, and then, you know, it becomes more expensive, and the building, again, demolition by neglect.
Vice President Clark?
Thank you very much, President Tamish. For the record, watching the condition of the West Barnstable Railroad Station deteriorate over three years, the delay was due to a prolonged legal problem that was unforeseen. And that three-year delay caused significant increased deterioration, as well as increased restoration costs that could have been avoided. Unfortunately, not in this case, but I'm just, I think that delaying will just be more costly in the end. And I do think that... And I do think that any value of that building starts with making it secure and keeping it from getting worse, therefore, saving money in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Neary?
Thank you, President Tamish. This presentation, this exterior restoration project, the conversation was involved with 200 Main, and the steamship on the parking lot behind it, there was a lot of conversation that went on with that. And, you know, the original intent was to try to consolidate town staff, create space down here, figure out what we're going to do with that property over there. I would, I was going to say, a Town Manager was clairvoyant. I think that in deference to the folks that were not involved with those original discussions seven years ago, it wasn't seven months, it was seven years ago when this came up, I think it would be prudent to allow fellow councils to have some input. Maybe this isn't what is in the best interest today. Seven years ago, that seemed to be the right move. I would suggest that it's CPC funds, we could revisit this in a matter of months. And regarding the building, I will share that it is, it's not getting to be in disrepair. It is in disrepair. So this is not something we should be talking about seven years from now. We should be talking about it within, you know, the calendar year would be my suggestion on it anyways. That's my thoughts.
Councilor Crowe?
I move this item to be withdrawn until the time that we have a workshop in the next few months. It's the summertime, it's not going to deteriorate as much as it would be over a nine-month period in the winter, and just move on to a workshop so we can make this decision at the, or midsummer or end of the summer, so we can decide to either go ahead with this funding or not, depending on what's, what the opinion of the council is.
Karen Nober, procedurally?
Thank you. I was going to suggest that you either just withdraw it, or you continue it to a date certain, but if you're withdrawing it until some unspecified date, that has the, that has the effect of killing it. So I would ask that you maybe pick one of those two options.
Yeah, I would adjust my motion to say a date certain, and we come up with a date certain for the summer, let's do that now.
We have, what's the first meeting in September? September 4th. I have a motion to move this to continue it to September 4th. Okay, motion made and seconded to continue this item to September 4th. Madam Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
No.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Blum?
Yes.
Eleven, yes, one no.
Thank you. Okay. It's 9:15, and we will start the budget. Okay, let's see. Councilor Lutke, were you up next? Or did you? 2025-157, please.
Okay, thank you. This is all business, it's a public hearing with a roll call majority vote of the full council. Item 2025-157, appropriation order in the amount of $93,622, wait, yeah.
$93 million.
No, $93,622,700 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2026 Barnstable Public School Department budget.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. I will declare the public hearing to be open. Recognize Superintendent Hearn and her staff.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm joined by Chris Dwelly, our Deputy Director of School Finance, and in the audience is School Committee Chairperson Kathy Bent, Assistant Superintendent Kristen Harmon, and our Data Systems Analyst for State Reporting Maureen Lovett. I appreciate the opportunity to present our budget to you tonight. I prefaced the financial information with a few slides to complement CFAX report. I wanted to give you and the public a sense of the investments we're making, the efforts we're undertaking, and quite frankly, what we're looking to protect in the coming years, as we know that we have a difficult budget forecast ahead of us, and this has been an exceedingly difficult budget to put together this year. A couple of highlights from the current school year. We have been focusing on Barnstable Community Innovation School and its renewal of its innovation plan, which is a huge draw for students all across Barnstable and other towns. The Barnstable Community Innovation School will be focusing in two areas. They will be focusing on additional educator preparation through partnership with higher education institutions, and they'll be exploring dual-language or bilingual learning opportunities, and that complements their project-based learning curriculum focus. We've operationalized a thorough curriculum review process to make sure that we are reviewing content areas on a regular basis, and part of that was implementing a high-leverage new early literacy curriculum in K-5 through a GLEAM grant, and that is growing literacy equity across Massachusetts from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It is grounding, grounded is something that you may be hearing about, the science of reading, and really teaches students very explicitly those early literacy skills. As part of the curriculum review process, Assistant Superintendent Harmon and members of our curriculum team have been focusing on math in grades six through 12 in the health curriculum, and those adoptions were part of the FY25 budget, and we have, we're looking forward to impacts there, providing sustained professional development to support instruction with this theme of making sure that our teachers have both the tools and the skills they need, leading to improved student learning outcomes. We've talked a lot, and we're very proud of establishing the first Coast Guard JROTC program in the Northeast, and we're one of 14 nationwide. Our Performing Arts Department is really blossoming. It took a huge hit during COVID and has really been coming back, and they recently won several awards in the Northeast region. Two of our ensembles scored first place at a competition at Westfield State University, and two of our ensembles got second place and received accolades like "superior" and "excellent." And we are looking to make sure that our students have hands-on and exploratory learning opportunities and field trips to enrich their experience. Last year, at the budget hearing, you asked about our graduation rate, and so we brought some statistics for you. Our graduation rate, our four-year graduation rate is 84.6%. The adjusted rate takes into account students who began high school with us and does not include those who've transferred in. So when you adjust for students who begin with us, that goes up to 89.3%. Over five years, we do have students who stay with us for five years, the graduation rate goes up again, both for the five-year overall rate and the five-year adjusted rate. As was mentioned earlier, related to MCAS, no longer counting towards competency determination in graduation. A lot of people are wondering what that means, and MasCor is one way that we can compare high schools in terms of programs of studies. And we're proud to say that through work that's been done at the high school, 100% of our graduates are meeting this rigorous course of studies, which is one of the requirements for admission into Massachusetts state colleges and universities. We're proud of our formal pathways and programs through either Chapter 74 or so-called innovation pathways in areas on the screen like environmental science, business and finance, culinary arts, early education and care, and health assisting. We also have had such success with these pathways that we have pathways that are not formal Department of Education pathways, like the writers' pathway, the performing arts pathway, and others, because students are really finding their why in our schools and really able to concentrate their areas of focus. These pathways do yield industry credentials, including OSHA-10, OSHA-40, and USGS boat or safety for our environmental science program. We graduate students, or we have students, between 70 and 80 students who are served safe food handler certification. We anticipate having 180 students in our educator pathway next year, and 18 to 20 students receive EEC certification annually as early childhood educators. 23 students in 2024 departed Barnstable High School as licensed CNAs, and 29 will depart in '25. 60 to 80 students are certified in first aid, and we had our first-ever lifeguard training course as part of our physical education program, and we've trained seven lifeguards for employment, hopefully here in Barnstable. A little college application data for you as well, from our guidance department. 1,510 college applications were processed with an average number of 4.43 per student. We did proudly recognize one of our students with a perfect math SAT score, and he's graduating this Saturday. Plans of the current class of 2025, a large and increasing number are pursuing two-year public college, primarily at Cape Cod Community College. I believe this is in part due to the free college tuition for students who have graduated from high school, so it's a wonderful opportunity here locally for students to get a leg up, leave 4Cs, and pursue higher ed with some of the connections that they have with some of the state schools. And actually, 4Cs also has some opportunities to earn a bachelor's in particular programs. A roughly even split between four-year public and four-year private schools, and then we have other options listed there as well for the class of 2025. It's always interesting to see on Instagram the students posting where they're committing to, so I don't have, you could follow our Instagram and see where they're committing to, but I just summarized in a few slides the top six public Massachusetts schools our students will be attending. The top seven private or out-of-state public schools our students will be attending. And then some of the top-tier, most competitive notable schools our graduates will be attending I think where Barnstable really shines is in terms of our work with our multilingual learners and the number of students who are graduating biliterate in multiple languages. So these next two slides talk a little bit about the outcomes for our multilingual learners. Since 2019, our K-3 schools consistently exceed well beyond the state-level expectation for multilingual learners making progress towards language benchmarks. And last year, nearly 70% of our K-3 multilingual students met their progress benchmarks, where the state goal is 50%. We are seeing similar success K-8 in exceeding the state benchmark, and we're exceeding state averages for high school. And we're exceeding the state level in terms of the percent of students exiting the program with language proficiency within six years. And then the Seal of Biliteracy is something that we're very, very proud of. We have, the Seal of Biliteracy is a credential provided to students with demonstrated proficiency in English and at least one other language, and it can be earned in multiple languages. It will be represented for students as an insignia on their diploma and transcript, and this accolade will allow students to receive additional credits towards many state colleges and universities. There are workplace and military benefits, and it is applicable for students whose primary language is English, and they're earning biliterate proficiency in another world language, like Spanish, or Portuguese, or French, we also, or Mandarin. We also see students whose first language is not English, it might be Portuguese, or Spanish, or another language, who are earning proficiency in their primary language and in English. We continue to see an expansion and an increase of 38% over last year in terms of the number of recipients. This year, we had 49 students receive the Seal of Biliteracy, which is 14% of the graduating class. So I wanted to just kind of share, we hear a lot about MCAS. MCAS scores are something that we take very seriously and are working towards, and the curriculum and instruction areas that we're focusing on are intent on improving student learning outcomes, but I did also want to paint another picture for you as a council and our community members of all that we're investing in, and again, like I said, looking to preserve and protect. Because we came into a very difficult budget season. Our fiscal situation does reflect a statewide trend. There are many newspaper articles, and I'd be happy to share some with you if you wanted to look into it further, that this is a statewide trend that's happening. Some districts have been facing FY25 shortfalls, which you may have heard about in the current year. We are not in that situation. What are some of the contributing factors? You heard about the expiration of ESER funding, which came as a result of the pandemic. We are seeing a decrease in our grant awards. This is not due to a change in administration. This is, annually, we see a fluctuation in grant awards. We also absorb health insurance costs into our grants, and so the change from 60-40 to 70-30 did create additional pressures on our grant funding. Like every department, we're seeing escalated expenses as a result of inflation, and Chapter 70 has not been keeping up with inflation. It's a major area of advocacy for both elected officials and professionals, and my professional organization, to look at Chapter 70 and push for a number that is more reflective of what inflation has actually been. We have seen an enrollment decrease, and Chris will share a little bit of those numbers. It is not to the same magnitude that many of the Cape towns are seeing. It is to a lesser extent, but we have seen a slight enrollment decrease. As you know, we went from receiving pretty hefty increases to the tune of $5 million a year from the Student Opportunity Act, but that was short-lived, and we have become a minimum aid community in one year. That was FY25, and it continues into FY26, which means that we'll get the minimum aid or minimum increase in aid per pupil based on the Chapter 70 formula. Circuit breaker, which is reimbursement for high-cost special education, is not always fully funded. And then what ends up happening, and it's happening here and in many communities, but local revenue not being able to increase enough to make up the difference. So we began our budget back in December and asked for our departments. We have 18 sites to put in submissions. They were also asked to consider where they could reallocate funds, and if there was anything that they would propose for reduction, because we did forecast, coming into the budget, we forecasted a deficit. We received 64 submissions from the 18 sites, and the net costs of the requests were 5.2 million. Requests of 20 positions and the major submission themes are probably no surprise. Some supplies and one-time efforts, particularly in the area of maintenance and technology and curriculum, contracted services, support for English language learners and special education.
So as the superintendent talked about, some of the budget challenges that we faced when we were crafting this budget this year, Chapter 70 was certainly a major one, and this slide highlights that. This shows our year-over-year change from, excuse me, FY25 to FY26. I draw your attention to the three figures percent change on the far right of this slide. The first one is the The first one is the 7.12% increase. That is our required district contribution year-over-year that the Chapter 70 formula essentially says that we need to increase our required district contribution by over 7%. The figure below that, which is 1.5%, is our Chapter 70 aid that we receive from the state. Two fiscal years ago, we received $4 million in an annual increase in Chapter 70 aid. This year, it's less than $400,000. So what that does is that bottom number there, that 5.54% is our required net school spending. That's the amount that we need to spend on education in Barnstable. And at a 5.5% increase, when we're seeing overall revenues increase at 3%, 3.5%, that creates a big problem for us when we're creating this budget. So we wanted to highlight that for you in a little bit more detail as we go through here.
Enrollment trends for the past 10 years are on this slide. Enrollment drives Chapter 70 in a major way, not only with numbers, but also based on various subgroups. There are increments per pupil based on certain subgroups. And we continue to see our first language. For students whose first language is not English, we continue to see that increase as well as our English language learners, which might not exactly be the same depending upon where they test in terms of their language proficiency. But we're up around 25% for English language learners. Students with disabilities is remaining relatively steady at about 18%. But what we are seeing is an increased severity of student need in terms of the disabilities that students are presenting with. Economically disadvantaged and low income has decreased slightly. And then high needs is the category where students may fall into more than one of these categories but are only counted once. And so high needs is an unduplicated count of students, which is a pretty significant number, which is nearly 2/3 or almost 70% of our students meeting that high needs category. So coming into the budget, what were some of my priorities in putting this together? Really wanted always to ground our budget in our district goals and our district improvement plan. And a huge priority there has been curriculum and instruction, as I had mentioned. We wanted to take a careful look at facilities, particularly operating costs and maintenance. Quite frankly, wished we had been able to do more with this budget. But we are dealing with very, very, we will go into some of the details, but wished we could do more, and we're unable to. As I had mentioned, we have a diverse set of needs among our students that we are attending to, looking to make sure that we have an equitable allocation of resources across our schools, particularly K-3, for example, when we have five elementary schools, making sure that it's equitable across them. Wanting to make sure that we're efficient and effective, maintaining appropriate class sizes and caseloads. And also looking ahead to sustainability, wanting to be fiscally responsible, but also knowing that we have services to deliver. Facing the budget gap and budget deficit, a huge priority of mine had been to preserve programs. I'm very concerned about regional competitiveness, very concerned about school choice and making sure that we are an attractive option for Barnstable families, that Barnstable families choose Barnstable schools early and continue with us through high school. We are looking to create a continuum, more of a continuum through our programs. And I worry about hitting services so hard that we're reducing entire programs entirely. We didn't get there in this budget, but I do worry about that. So in terms of this budget, we have proposed, and the school committee has approved, $1.1 million in some recommended investments. And many of these are mandated. They're mandated services that we have to provide, including an increase to the out-of-district tuition for students who attend special education schools. We have some consultants and some, I think, return-on-investment-type initiatives in special education for $46,000. The Q Interactive Assessment will help take assessments off of paper and put it more on technology, on iPads. And then DocuSign is an initial investment, but will help with less paperwork going back and forth and mailings if we're doing more electronic signatures. We have a special education teacher added at West Villages due to very high caseloads there and mandated services. BUE saw a reduction in teachers in the last budget, but there is a larger group coming into BUE from grade three. So we are looking to restore those two positions to maintain appropriate and required class sizes. We have an alternative learning program called ACE, which is in the afternoon from 2:00 to 7:00. It is very and highly successful and a great option for students for whom the day program is not working. And we have a need for a halftime EL teacher there. For our students with disabilities, we have a special program as a partnership with NECC, which is a program for students with autism. We are looking to expand that by adding a classroom, and that requires the additional three instructional assistants. This is a great investment. It both keeps the students here in district, which enriches them and enriches everyone who works with them and interacts with them. But it also prevents an out-of-district tuition for each of those students, so it is a cost saver. We have some technology required upgrades, including our phone system. We have a need for laptop lease and purchasing laptops for our nurses so that they can maintain their services. And then some technology equipment. We have, we're moving towards multi-factor authentication in order to maintain our security that is required by our cybersecurity insurance carrier. And we have to update staff Chromebooks that have reached their end of life and can no longer be maintained. Out of savings, we are also proposing to add these one-time expenses, $380,000 for a K-5 math curriculum review. This is something that our teachers are clamoring for. They have greatly appreciated the early literacy program, and that takes time to implement well. But they are so eager to bring on some new mathematics materials. It is very much a need. And so the school committee is supporting this and with the idea that the funding would come from savings as a one-time cost. Our, ILC, our intensive learning centers, which is another type of program like NECC for students with disabilities, needs a better curriculum that's aligned with the curriculum frameworks. And so that is what TeachTown is, and the teachers have selected that and are looking forward to that. And then we have contracted with a mold prevention specialist through a competitive bid process. This is an up-to-three-year engagement. They actually presented at school committee last night, having done a very thorough assessment across all nine of our buildings. And so that is proposed, the remainder of that is proposed to be funded out of savings for this next up-to-three-year contract. That left a gap of about $2.4 million to close. And so I want to go through a little bit of our thought process on how we closed this $2.4 million gap, with a reduction of services being the choice, the last choice, and mitigation efforts coming earlier on to try to save that off as best as possible. So we wanted to make sure that we took a careful look at our positions and position control. And if we had vacancies long-term, we took those out of the budget. We shifted the partial salaries of seven positions into revolving accounts or grant accounts where applicable. We also worked with our union, the Barnstable Teachers Association, to see if we could incentivize anybody to retire. If they were going to retire next year, maybe they would retire this year, and we could recoup some savings with their retirement because they would go out at a higher salary. So we worked with them to flex some of the dates in the collective bargaining agreement for notification for sick leave buyback and longevity. And then we also increased fees. I should also say, it's not listed here, but we are working very hard to maximize our Medicaid reimbursement. We have preserved, purposefully preserved, certain areas in the budget so that, and invested in some training and professional development so that we are trying to bring in as much Medicaid reimbursement as we can because we can track that for certain services that are provided in the district. We then took a close look at our class sizes across the district and our projected enrollment by grade and then by course at the high school. And based on some enrollment declines, did our due diligence while maintaining appropriate class sizes and eliminated positions at the high school, Hyannis West, BCIS, and the Early Learning Center. Wherever possible, doing this through attrition, including retirement and resignations. We reviewed carefully any positions that were brought into the budget as a result of ESER. ESER funding coincided with the major demographic shift in Barnstable. So a lot of ESER positions went to support mandated services in the area of special education, counseling, and English learners. And so there isn't a lot there that we can do without. But we did take a careful look and reduced 3.5 positions district-wide. And then lastly, as a last resort, we eliminated 10 positions, which is roughly $650,000 of reduced services. This included math coach, some interventionists, paraprofessionals, administrators, and a social worker. So we're coming into FY26 with a net reduction of 18.5 positions across the district. And we reduced in FY25 as well.
With all that said, here is our proposed budget for FY26. It is balanced. It is a 4.75% increase year-over-year. This slide shows you the comparison between last year. Shows the change broken down by our major expense category, salary supplies, and operating contracted services. In terms of funding, you'll see our appropriation. That's from the 60-40 split at 3.38%. And then you see a large increase there for our savings. Sarah mentioned in the last slide, $1 million of that is going to one-time expenses. We do not anticipate using this amount of savings at this point to build the FY27 budget. With using this amount of savings, we still have a projected $10 million balance once free cash is certified for the school savings account. So it's a healthy balance from our perspective.
I'll just note, coming into the budget, we kind of forecasted level service to be a five, to meet level service, we would need a 5% increase. So 4.75% is less than that, and it's heavily supported by the savings account. So when CPAC noted that I said that this is an unsustainable structure, that is what I was referring to.
This slide just details our proposed funding sources. So over the past seven or eight years, as it relates to FY26, there are some additional funding sources that primarily are aid-based that we get that support the budget. So I'm looking at FY26 from top to bottom. We do use $200,000 from our transportation revolving fund account. This is primarily from bus fees for transportation. That primarily supports the transportation department's operations. We talked about savings. School choice, we're using $600,000. That comes in from kids who choice in to the district. And then the last piece, that's a new piece, is the circuit breaker amount. And that's the amount that we get reimbursed by the state for very high-cost special needs services, primarily out-of-district tuitions, out-of-district placements. And then the last line there is the appropriation that we spoke about.
In addition to the entitlement grants that Chris was referring to, we do seek out competitive grants wherever possible, and we receive quite a few. We have an amazing grants department that is very active in going after funds. It can be tricky. Sometimes those funds come with expectations and obligations that create additional challenges and burdens on our capacity. But when it makes sense, we do really try to seek out as many competitive grants as we possibly can. And the state's been wonderfully supportive of those pathway programs that I had mentioned. That's come up in many ways, including capital, when there might be some matching state funds. What's hidden also in terms of a funding source for the district is the generosity of the Cobb Trust. So I want to make sure this is a good opportunity, I think, to note. In the past couple of years, the Cobb Trust has supported the district to the tune of about $340,000 or $350,000 per year. This past year, due to a slightly altered structure, the trust has been able to support an increase towards $513,000, which is very significant. Typically, Cobb Trust funds go towards enrichment projects that are aligned with district priorities and our curriculum and are an extension of academics. It could be materials in the classroom. It could be field trips, guest speakers, and authors. But some really amazing, enriching opportunities. This year, Steve Heslinga, the trustee of the Cobb Trust, has worked with us, and the Cobb Trust is very generously supporting that grade 6 through 12 math curriculum that we talked about, which we had anticipated as an FY25 expense. And we want to greatly thank the Cobb Trust for the support for all of these years.
Each year, we present the budget broken down in two different ways, and these next two slides highlight that for you. I won't go through it, but this is the entire budget broken down by cost center. That's how we budget by cost center. These are your school buildings, and there are also district-wide efforts like maintenance and transportation. So you'll see the FY26 amounts there, the change. And then there's three years of historical values there as well. The next slide is broken down in a little bit different way, and this is just by DESI function areas. These are the function areas that they use to build the Chapter 70 formula. So it's just another different way of looking at kind of where the budget dollars are allocated to in terms of these categories. Go ahead, Sarah.
And before we end on one final slide, the final slide will project forward into FY27 and FY28 what we're anticipating as a budget forecast. But I did want to just sort of pause and share some concerns that I have about regional trends. So net school spending and per pupil expenditure are two ways that you might be able to compare town to town in terms of expenses. At one point in time, back towards 2008, the Cape Cod region was much more clustered and I would say much more equitable in terms of net school spending. And this is the percent over net school spending. So Chris had previously talked about required net school spending that is determined by the state. Pretty much every district across the entire state spends over that, to the average of 30%. Over time, we're seeing a great widening of the percent spending above that requirement. And Barnstable is the red dashed line on the bottom. We, at one point, were spending state average above net school spending. We're now spending 17% above net school spending. And the regional average is 50% above net school spending. So there's a widening gap comparatively. And I'm worried about competitiveness in the region, particularly in a competitive school choice area. And then graphing per pupil expenditure with data coming out of the Department of Education. The numbers might vary slightly from what CPAC had in their report. Although Chris did work with them on it. These numbers come from the Department of Education. Naturally, everybody has increased over the period of time. But there is a widening gap growing, and Barnstable is on the lower, the lowest side. gap growing, and Barnstable is on the lower, the lowest side related to per pupil expenditure. So, there is going to be an economy of scale. We are the largest district, and so I do recognize that. There's one superintendent here, there's one superintendent in the other district, so there is an economy of scale. But I am generally wanting to make sure that we continue to be the best, the biggest and the best district, and the choice for Barnstable families, and recruit other families into the amazing offerings that we have.
And this is our last slide, and this is what we're looking at for the next few years. So, as Chris LaZan alluded to earlier, we are not out of the woods yet. FY '27, we're projecting a little bit over $1 million of a deficit. That's a pretty good number. All of our collective bargaining agreements are set, all of our large contracts are set, so there's really not much room there. The only thing that really changes is if we get a large increase in state aid next year, or all of a sudden, our out-of-district placements, you know, they go somewhere else. So, that number, we, you know, we think is, we're pretty set. That's what we're looking at for FY '27. FY '28, with our projections, we're up about $2 million in deficit. There's a few more uncertainties with FY '28. Our CBAs, our collective bargaining agreements, will be out that year, so we won't know that figure at this point. And our transportation, our bus contract for regular transportation will be brand-new in FY '28, and so, we, at this point, don't know what we will be experiencing in terms of increases for transportation. So, we've still got some work to do in future years.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard? Is there anyone online?
No, but I would like to make note that Counselor Starr has left the meeting.
Left the meeting? Thank you. Couple of quick questions. You said approximately 70% are high needs. It was a little bit less than that. Approximately 70% are high needs. How does that compare to other school districts?
That would be, I think, much higher than most other school districts. There are certainly others that would fall into that category, but that's going to be higher than many that you're thinking of.
Do you know why?
I think a big driver of it is, it's the combination, but a big driver of it is the economically disadvantaged being as high as it is, and then you combine that with 20, 25% ELs, and the special education, we're about average on, but it's higher than many other districts.
And on the Student Opportunity Act, you went from $5 million to the minimum?
Yes.
What drove that?
So, my understanding, and there may be other folks from the finance department who have things to add, a huge chunk of it is property value. So, the required local contribution is a combination of a number of things, including income and property value. I think property value was a huge driver of that, and then, sort of that flat or slightly declining enrollment.
Thank you. Any discussion on my right? Counselor Lutke?
Could you explain how the property value impacts? You mean, a high property value means lower, more, less money?
Yes, so, the higher property value would mean that there is an expectation that there's more local taxing and less state money coming in to support the schools.
Can your PowerPoint be available for the public to see on the website? Thank you.
Any discussion on my left? Counselor Neary?
Thank you, President Tamish, and thank you Superintendent Hearn and Finance Manager. I just have one question, and just if you could elaborate on it, only because it is a glaring stat. So, can you elaborate on what the factors are that determine a high-need student? I mean, you have the other ones about, you know, English and second language. Are they combined? Is that like a...
It combines them together. So, you might have an English-language learner who also is on an IEP, and so, fits within those two categories. The high-needs category doesn't count them twice, it counts them once, and so, it's an unduplicated count of the students from those other categories. Economically disadvantaged students on IEPs who are in special education and are English-language learners.
Yeah, I was sort of interested in just, what is the average age of our educators in your school system?
Oh, I'm, I don't, I don't know. I don't know. What I could say, what I would say, the statistic that I do know, when we were looking at salaries during collective bargaining, about 50%, I want to say, are at the top step, and a little bit more than that. So, we've had a number of educators who've been with us for at least 11 or 12 years, but I really don't know, I really don't know the average.
And you know, could you tell me maybe how it's trending? Trending younger? I assume, I always read throughout the United States that we're losing a lot of teachers to retirement, which is normal. And that would, that would lead to younger-age people starting to get into the field from out of college or whatever.
Yeah.
So, I think the trend would be to lower age, or am I wrong?
Yeah, we're not seeing a trend towards lower age, and I think it's for a couple of reasons. We have a number of educators, when I stand on the first day of school, I recognize longevity, and I ask people who've been here for 20 or 25 or 30 years to stand to be recognized. And there is a significant number of people in the room who are standing to be recognized. And I think love working in Barnstable and continue to work with the students. When we have vacancies in recent years, we've had trouble filling them with people who are lower on the salary schedule. I think there's affordability issue and a housing concern, and so, the trend that I've seen in terms of hiring are people who are better off financially, maybe relocating and coming to the Cape from off Cape and settling here. And so, that's been a little bit of a trend. We are seeing, I am seeing some new educators coming into the profession now, where, I think, there's a shift, I think, that's happening in the market a little bit, because, you know, other districts are in similar situations. You may read about cuts in other places. So, there, there is a little bit more, there's more candidates for positions than there had been even two years ago. And so, we're seeing some people enter the profession, some newer educators, a lot of people who may be from Barnstable. We are very successful in bringing Barnstable students back here. So, there may be a slight shift happening with that trend, but in recent years, it's continuing to trend towards a more experienced educator, which is hard from a budgeting standpoint because to have people retire and hire at the lower end of the pay scale is typically a huge help.
Is there a retirement age where, whatever the individual is, they retire at full benefits for the rest of their life? What is that age?
It's a combination of age and years. If somebody worked full-time and paid in to the system at 11%, it's like 57 or 58. It's towards 62 if they, and sometimes, people take some time off. So, somebody might be able to retire with full benefits at 57 or 58.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion? Madam Court?
Counselors. Crowe?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Eleven yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Counselor Bloom, could you do 2025-158, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is old business. In for a public hearing, a roll call, majority vote of the full council. Item 2025-158 is an appropriation order in the amount of $12 million, $508,718 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2026 Airport Enterprise Fund budget.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. I would open the public hearing at this point and recognize Chris. I don't know who's doing the... Mike Nelson, Interim Manager at Cape Cod Gateway Airport. Welcome. Thank you very much.
Chris Welly, Deputy Finance Director for School Operations. Mark Millen and I are going to go back and forth on these presentations, and I think Mark's going to kick things off with this one.
Just thank you, Chris, and thank you, President Tamish, and good evening, town counselors. Mark Millen, Director of Finance. As Chris mentioned, the two of us are going to present the rest of the budget slides this evening for the various departments, and I'd like to start off by just thanking Chris, as well as Garrett Markwell, our Assistant Finance Director, for their assistance in developing this year's 2026 operating budget for all of our departments. We'll start off with the Airport Enterprise Fund. The FY '26 proposed budget for the direct operating expenses of the Airport Enterprise Fund are increasing $590,000 to 12, just over $12.5 million. This does not include the indirect cost charges for the operation that are paid to the general fund. Those indirect cost charges are part of other appropriations within the general fund. This budget has nearly doubled over the past five years, which is mainly attributable to the cost of acquiring jet fuel for resale. Funding for this operation is provided from the revenue generated at the facility, which is predominantly derived from the sale of jet fuel, concessions revenue, and lease revenue. No general fund financial support is provided to this operation as it is self-supporting with the revenue that it generates. It does receive a small grant every year from the Transportation Security Administration to assist funding that is required for, assist funding with the required security costs that we incur at the facility. Changes to the budget include contractual obligations for staff, indirect cost charges for the general fund support, and increase in operating expenses, additional funding for capital outlay, and a slight increase for debt service. This operation includes 25 full-time equivalent employees, and there is no change to this amount for fiscal year '26. The largest operating expenses include jet fuel purchases for resale, which is about $6 million, insurance costs for about $460,000, and electricity for about $325,000. The total proposed budget for fiscal year '26 is 13, just over $13.5 million, direct and indirect costs. This includes the direct operating expenses of $12.5 million and indirect cost charges from the general fund of just over $1 million. The appropriation before you tonight only includes those direct operating expenses. Again, joining us here this evening is Airport Manager Mike Nelson to answer any questions along with us that you may have. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, President.
Discussion on my right? Any discussion on my left? Was there any public input? Wow. You lucked out for your first night.
Well, they did a fantastic job, so I thank them.
Yes, they do. We have top-notch financial people, believe me, we do. All right. Excuse me. Counselor Crowe?
Could you tell me what the net revenue is for this enterprise fund?
Revenue for the enterprise fund this year was just in excess of $13 million, and we exceeded our revenue projection. Previous manager was very conservative, it appears, and fuel sales, as Mr. Millen said, really increased dramatically. And our margin in fuel sales is very good.
Okay, so, that's, that's net, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Excuse me? I don't believe so. I don't see anyone. No one on Zoom, correct? Okay. All right, I will close the public hearing. Excuse me. Counselor Lebec?
Mr. Nelson, I just want to say thank you for coming to Barnstable and helping us out in this, in this situation after losing, I believe, his three really valuable employees, and I really appreciate you coming in here and really doing a great job, from what I understand, so thank you.
You're very welcome, Counselor. I just want to thank everybody in the town. All the departments have been very, very welcoming and very, very helpful, tremendous staff at the airport, so they're contributing huge.
Great. Okay. I will close the public hearing. I don't think I closed it. I will now. And no further discussion? Madam Clark?
Counselors. Lebec?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We will move on to 2025-159.
Thank you. President Tamish, this is old business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council. Agenda item 2025-159, appropriation order in the amount of $19,774,938 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2026 Barnstable Police Department budget.
Okay, moved and seconded. I will open the public hearing at this point, and Chris or Mark?
Great. Yep, I'll take this one. The FY '26 Police Department budget is increasing $1 million over the FY '25 approved budget. The budget growth history has averaged 6% per year from FY '22, or for the period from FY '22 to FY '26. Most of this operation is funded with tax support. $241,000 of general fund reserves will be used to balance the budget. Changes to the budget include $1.5 million to fund contractual obligations for personnel, offset by E911 and cops hiring grants totaling just about $407,000. An additional $237,000 in training funds are provided so that all mandatory training, as well as requested discretionary training, is fully funded. Additional funds are included for cellphones, so that all sworn officers are provided a town-issued cellphone, and the annual cost increase for managed IT services. $7,589 is provided to the marine unit to cover the increasing cost of maintaining the department's two boats.
Chris, can you get...
Chris, is your, is your mic on?
I believe so. Maybe I just need to speak a little closer?
Thank you.
Yep, sure. $28,000 is provided to keep pace with the new technologies and digital forensics that play a major role in nearly all of the cases. Funding for police vehicle replacements are decreasing $238,000 as savings identified in the FY '25 budget allowed the department to replace more vehicles than originally planned. Other reductions in capital outlay include $118,948 for a technology refresh in FY '25 that is not repeated in the FY '26 budget. The total FTEs for this operation remains constant at 147.5. Chief Chalice is here to answer any detailed questions or operational questions that you may have on the budget.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to be heard on this item? Seeing no one. Anyone online? Seeing no one. We have council discussion. Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, President Tamish. Thank you for being here tonight. Could you give us a quick update on the use of cameras, body cameras, in the force, and is that reflected in the budget in terms of any increased usage?
The body cameras were implemented last May, and they're a recurring part of the budget, and we did include provisions that we will have redaction software added to the budget that was rolled into the existing funding, and we are going into year two of our five-year funding plan with these. So, there was no significant increase.
Okay. So, everyone on the forces, if they're out on patrol, they're...
That's correct. Everybody wears a body camera.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions on the right? Any questions on the right? Counselor Crowe?
Thank you. Chief Chalice, always a pleasure. You've got 147, 147 and a half FTEs right now. What is, what is your, what would you consider full staff?
Our full allotment for sworn personnel is 120. We currently have 14 vacancies with two pending retirements, and then we have a total of 23 if you add those vacancies in, of people who are currently out for, you know, planned medical procedures or extended absences, but those aren't technically vacancies, so we have 14 vacancies with two pending.
Okay, so the 147 is?
That includes our civilian staff, our dispatchers and our civilian staff.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on my left? Counsel?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Quick question. I was surprised to see the savings or the reduction in vehicle replacements and technology. That's a significant number. How'd you do that?
We were able to purchase vehicles this year rather than spend in our FY26 budget. We were able to access vehicles now, which resulted in significant savings. We were able to use personnel vacancy savings from our FY25 budget. It also resulted in about $28,000 in savings because we were able to buy them at the current rate rather than the FY26 price, and also probably avoid some tariffs.
Good move. Thank you.
I'm not going to say it. Those vehicles never?
They're not blue.
Chief, Chief Chalice knows what I'm asking. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Eleven, eleven yes, thank you.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere, Chief. We're going to bring up the civil service article.
Oh, excellent.
Do it now.
Thank you.
Yes, 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 yes. We may have to extend your budget. How much did you say it would be per cruiser?
Over $6,000.
Sounds like a bargain to me. Counselor Crowe, could you read in 2025-186? That's the civil service revocation, town's acceptance. I wanted to make sure we got that done tonight.
Okay, this is the Order of Old Business. It's 2025-186, Order Revoking the Town's Acceptance of the Provisions of Chapter 31 of the General Law's Civil Service Law as to the Police Department, may be acted upon by a majority vote.
Second.
Okay. I recognize Assistant Town Manager Clyburn.
Good evening, Mr. President, Town Counselors. Andy Clyburn, Assistant Town Manager. It's my pleasure to read in the rationale for item 2025-186. In 1937, the Barnstable Town Meeting voted to accept certain provisions of mass general laws, placing the Police Department and Police Chief under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Civil Service Program. Pursuant to the Town Charter adopted in 1989, changing the town's form of government, special legislation was filed and enacted by the legislature, which provided that civil service coverage was not extended beyond the coverage already in place. Upon petition from the town, a special act, Chapter 227, of the Acts of 2024, was approved on October 31, 2024, removing the Barnstable Police Chief from civil service. In February of 2024, the Town Council appropriated funds to cover the cost of the creation of internal police department working groups. These working groups were tasked with developing new policies and procedures to replace the rules and regulations of Massachusetts civil service. The working groups have completed their task, and both police unions have ratified memorandums of agreement. The next step in the process is to seek a vote of the Town Council, since under state law, the way to get out of civil service is the same way that you got in. The regular police force of the town was brought under civil service by vote of town meeting, which was the legislative body of the town in 1937. As the Town Council is now the legislative body, a vote of the council is needed to rescind the town's acceptance of the provisions of law that placed the police force under civil service. If the Town Council votes to approve this order, the town will notify the State Human Resources Division within the Executive Office for Administration and Finance. I have Chief Chalice here. We also have HR Director Bill Cole and Town Attorney, if you have any questions on this. I do want to say that this is a significant, this is a big deal, a lot, a ton of work went into it. I can't thank the, both the Patrol Officers Union, the Superior Officers Union, HR Legal, and certainly Chief Chalice's leadership on this issue. This is a long time in coming. I know we've spent a lot of time talking about enforcement recently, and I will tell you, this is probably the most important vote that you'll take, in my opinion, to move forward on the enforcement and quality of life issues that we have in town.
Thank you. I have been in favor of this for at least the last 20 years. Not quite 1937, but it seems like almost that, that long. But having worked with and under civil service, it's a nightmare. It's an absolute nightmare, and I support this 1,000%. Any discussion on my right? Any discussion on my left? Counselor Neary?
President Tamish, and thank you, Assistant Director. Just the fiscal impact, could you just kind of elaborate on those?
Certainly. We negotiated with both of the unions. It's in alignment with what others have seen in fiscal year 26. Basically, that's a percent increase, but it's starting effective 1 January. Then the 2027, that $100,000 is, is more of a retention for officers, I believe, where they currently get a bump at between, I think it's year 10 and 20, and this adds a, I'm looking for Bill Cole. This adds a 15, and then it's another percentage in 2028. So this is, this is what was negotiated over the past couple of months with the two bargaining units.
I understand. I just wanted it to be elaborated upon, that's all.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Mendez? Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Eleven yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. And by the way, I wanted to just recognize Ian Spillane, who is the, the budget guru at the Police Department, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Mendez and Neary have vanished here, but coming back? You're up. You're up. 2020, 2025-160, please?
This is Old Business. Item number 2025-160. Appropriation order in the amount of $2,406,92 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2026 Planning and Development Department budget. So, public hearing by roll call or majority vote of the full council.
Second.
Moved and seconded, thank you. At this point, I would open the public hearing and recognize who's presenting.
Thank you, President Tamish. I'll take this one.
Mark Millen?
The, the proposed budget for the Planning and Development Department is increasing just over $22,000. This operation generates about $460,000 in revenue from various parking fees and fines, and as well as various other fees. About $238,660 of funding is provided from the Wetlands Protection Fund and Bismarck Park Special Revenue Funds. 69% of the funding is provided from taxes. $58,000 of general fund reserves will be used to balance this budget. Changes to the proposed budget for fiscal year 26 include $68,552 for contractual obligations. A new conservation agent position is proposed, proposed for this operation due to the increase in activity. There has been an increase in DEP wetland filings and associated notice of intent and request for determination of applicability. Building permits have also increased significantly. The staff level in conservation has been the same since fiscal year 2010. An additional agent is proposed to keep up with the increase in activity so that the town may respond in a timely manner. The budget proposal also recommends the elimination of the marketing manager's position. Most of the responsibilities of this position will be transferred to the existing grant coordinator position, which will be upgraded to a community development planner. The total full-time equivalent employees in this department, included in the general fund budget, remains the same at 19. And Director Kupner is here, joining us this evening, and answer any questions along with us on this budget, if you have some.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard, heard on this article? Seeing no one. Seeing no one online. Council discussion on my right. Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, President Tamish, and welcome to the planning team. I'm very excited to see that you're adding a conservation agent. Did you, were you successful in your hire of your replacement, Ed?
We weren't. In fact, he's starting tomorrow morning, so.
Right. And does this amount reflect a hire sometime within fiscal 2026, or is that the full amount for the position?
Mark, do you want to take that one?
Yes, thank you, Jim. That anticipates a nine months of funding, so it'll be about an October 1 start date.
Okay, thank you. And last question, could you remind us what the marketing manager's responsibilities were?
Sure. The marketing managers was actually a shared role between Planning and Development and Community Services, so there was some marketing activities over Community Service, though the whole of the line item was within Planning and Development. In Planning and Development, this position assisted with some economic development opportunities as well as event planning, 4th of July, and many other downtown Hyannis events, where, as Director Millen mentioned, those activities that were held in Planning and Development will be moved to our community development planner, who is now the grants coordinator, and will provide an expanded role to allow for her to take those actions on, as well as spread out throughout our team.
Just a comment for those of us who were on the ad hoc housing committee. There was a lot of discussion about the adequacy of the staffing for housing. Can you address that concern that we have, or do you feel like there's adequate resources in this budget to meet those concerns?
Absolutely, so I could speak to that. So, yes, we've, we've heard loud and clear in terms of the desire for further actions on housing. We felt that it was appropriate to see through the opportunity for a regional housing services office, that request for proposals, to my understanding and speaking to the county administrator just this past week, is that that request for proposal is going to be out shortly. And so the hope is that that would provide those gaps that we believe to have within housing. But if not, if that doesn't come to fruition, or it's not to our satisfaction, we'll be back before you with a, with a potential request for a position there.
Okay, thank you very much.
I was just curious, it's a very small amount, but what do you do for invasive weed management?
So, that's some of it, we actually have several projects. So, we're doing both fanwort and hydrilla for the lakes and ponds. We are also doing things for like, things like phlegmities and other types of invasive, invasive weeds, so it's a, it's a, done everything through mechanical means. There is no herbicide treatments that we're, that we're doing on conservation properties at this point.
It just seems an impossibly small amount based on the problem that we have. I just don't know what you, what you do with that amount of money.
Well, it's that, and then we do have another, there is a land management account that we do that, that also provides for things like the field mowing out of the, at several of the conservation areas, so, but I don't think that's, that's counted as part of that $2,500.
If I could also add some, shed some light on this, the entire capital outlay within the Planning and Development Department is dedicated towards invasive weed management, so it's over $194,000 a year. The increase is small, but the base rolled forward from last year was almost $192,000.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Counselors. Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yeah.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. For the record, Madam Clerk, Counselor Penn is leaving the meeting. Counselor Neary, could you read in 2025-161, please?
My pleasure. Thank you, President Tamish. This is Old Business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council. It is item number 2025-161. It's an appropriation order in the amount of $2,933,824 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2026 Community Services Department General Fund budget, as written.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. At this point, I would open the public hearing and.
I'll take this one.
Chris, okay?
The FY26 proposed budget for the Community Services Department General Fund is increasing $46,090. The average increase in this budget from FY22 to FY26 is 4.4% per year. This operation generates revenue from predominantly waterside activity, including beach parking revenue and beach permits totaling $2.5 million. Tax support of $343,000 and general fund reserves of $78,000 fund the remaining portion of the budget. FY26 budget changes include $33,000 for contractual obligations, $10,000 of funding for police details at Kovles, Craigville, and Hathaway's Pond during the busiest times to ensure road and beach safety, and an additional $2,500 for credit card processing fees. The full-time equivalent employee count for this operation remains at 15.45. Director Gennella is here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Director Gennella, welcome, and we'd like to introduce your entourage.
Yes, I, yes, I would. I can't remember Director Santos's terminology for his A-team last year, but I have Brenda Evans, Financials Manager, Chrissanne Karen, who's my assistant, Kelly Howley, Barnstable Dock Community Senator, Council and Aging Director, Director Mark Boardley, our manager of HYCC, and longtime John Gleason. I will say that unfortunately Jesse Scheckman could not be with us on it. He is, I'm feeling well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll switch it up here. My left, any, any discussion on my left? Counselor Neary?
Thank you, President Tamish. I think we should charge a fee for the credit card processing fees, just like last year. Thank you.
Any further discussion on my left? On my right, Counselor Ludke?
Yes, could you just go into greater detail why you need the police at your beaches and ponds?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Outside, when we're trying to control traffic, as you know, the passageway on Craigville Beach Road and getting access in there is needed, and we, and our staff is not licensed to do it and can't enforce it, so we have police detail. It's something that we had in the past in working with Chief Chalice to, to ensure public safety. I mean, you know, there's two restaurants or concession areas on the other side of the road, people egress that, walking, bicycle traffic to ensure safety there. And some of you who've been on the Town Council for a while remember the incident that happened down at Hathaway's Pond. down at Hathaway's Pond, I believe it was three years ago. So we want to make sure that we have assistance down there to help keep the population under control in the event that there is an emergency. So those are what those services are for, specifically timeframes that are needed that we've identified with the chief.
Counselor Turkelson.
Thank you, President Tamish. I know that we had a gate attendant who was opening and closing the gates, and we also appropriated some money for some automatic gates. I don't know if that's in this part of the budget, that might not be in this part of the budget, but are we still paying somebody to open and close the gates?
Yes, we have, the town council approved a seasonal person to close them out of season, the three locations that we do during the off-season. The Department of Public Works assist us was closing them, and we've extended those seasons from May 15th to opening day, which is June 21st this year. And then after our recreation season, which ends on Labor Day, the DPW again will assist us with securing all of those beach locations until October 15th.
And about the automatic gates, have we gotten any further on designing and developing and figuring that whole thing out?
Yes, Counselor Turkelson, they are working on the one at Calmas Beach right now to be included in that project, and more to come on the other two. That was kind of our first test and part of that capital project. So as these projects, other projects move forward and they're more advantageous for the town to take advantage of them and install these gates, we will do so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Schnepp.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Ten, yes.
Thank you. Lebec, 162, please.
Thank you, President Tamish. This is old business, public hearing, roll call, majority vote, the full council. This is item number 2025-162, appropriation order in the amount of $3,936 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2026 Golf Course Enterprise Fund Budget.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. At this point, I would declare the public hearing opened and recognize...
Take this one. Thank you. The FY26 proposed budget for the direct operating expenses of the Golf Enterprise Fund are decreasing $80,620 to a total of $3,936. This does not include the indirect cost charges for the operation that are paid to the general fund. Indirect cost charges are part of other appropriations. This budget has averaged a 4.3% increase per year from FY22 to FY26. Funding for this operation is provided from the revenue generated at the two facilities, which is predominantly derived from greens fees and memberships. No general fund financial support is provided to this operation as it is self-supporting with the revenue it generates. FY25 was the final year of the acquisition loan payment for the Hyannis Golf Course, which is the reason for the decrease in the budget. A total of $206,718 in golf course reserves will be used to balance the FY26 proposed operating budget.
Thank you.
The, I got one more.
Oh, one more page, sorry.
The proposed FY26 budget includes $163,115 for contractual obligations, $17,594 for an increase in the indirect cost charges from the general fund, a reduction in debt service of $270,760, and a net reduction of $32,975 in other operating expenses. Capital outlay has increased $60,000 for the purchase of an all-in-one range ball dispensing machine for each course. This budget includes funding for 17.8 full-time equivalent employees, the same number as FY25. Director Gennella is here with any, to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on my right? Vice President Clark.
Thank you. Thank you, President Tamish, and thank you for your presentation. Can you give us a quick synopsis on the status of the Hyannis Golf Course post-fire, or posts, post-water damage?
Yes, we are working with the Department of Public Works. Construction is ongoing. We have found some delays, we had some structural things that we had to address when we removed some of the drywall and ceiling coverings that we had. And I know that we are still working, David Anthony, Director Anthony is working with the insurance company for a final settlement. We made conscious decisions to sprinkle the building, although we were battling with the insurance company on whether we should or we shouldn't, and Director Florence was helping us with the building code, but we thought it would be in the town's best interest to sprinkle the building. But I would say the construction timeline right now is sometime in the end of October, and I'm just hopeful that we can have a clubhouse when we want to close all Barnstable Fairgrounds, typically Thanksgiving week, so we can give that golf course a break, and we'll have a brand-new facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Neary.
Thank you, President Tamish. Director Gennella, I'm telling you that the courses are in great shape, and the staff that you have on all of the stuff that you oversee, they do a great job. I don't notice the credit card fees on this particular budget this year, so are we charging the merchant fees for the memberships this year, do you know?
Most of the membership fees are actually paid in person via check.
Any further discussion? Counselor Ludke.
Well, you said they're paid by check, but do you charge for the credit card? Do you charge an additional fee?
There is an additional fee for credit card purchases in the pro shop for materials and supplies, yes.
Okay, because I know the schools do, and you have to pay for transportation, they charge an additional fee if you use a credit card. It just, I think it would be nice to have that, you know, the same across the town, you know?
Understand. Thank you, Counsel Ludke.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Thank you, ten, yes.
Thank you, it does pass. Counselor Schnepp, could you do 2025-163, please?
Thank you, President Tamish. This is old business, requiring a public hearing, roll call, two-thirds, full council. Item number 2025-163, appropriation order in the amount of $4,45,476 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2026 Hyannis Youth and Community Center Enterprise Fund Budget.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. At this point, I will open the public hearing. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. The FY26 proposed budget for the direct operating expenses of the HYCC Enterprise Fund are increasing $118,593 to $4,45,476. This does not include the indirect cost charges for the operation that are paid to the general fund. Indirect costs charges are part of other appropriations. This budget has averaged a 6.7% increase per year from FY22 to FY26, mostly due to increasing debt service costs as loans have been issued to make improvements at the facility. Revenue generated at the facility provides 21% of the funding for direct operating expenses. Subsidies from the general fund and capital trust fund provide for about two-thirds of the direct operating costs. A total of $522,894 in HYCC reserves will be used to balance the FY26 proposed operating budget. The proposed budget includes $91,148 for contractual obligations, an additional $86,645 for an increase in seasonal staffing levels and seasonal pay rates. Indirect cost charges from the general fund are increasing $79,078. Debt service is decreasing $57,450. Utilities are decreasing $34,750, and other operating expenses are increasing $13,000. An additional $20,000 is provided for mechanical equipment replacement, upgrades, and maintenance. There is no change to the number of full-time equivalent employees budgeted in this operation. Director Gennella is here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, no one online? I do note that there's $3,000 in credit card fees. Director Gennella, decrease in utilities? Wow.
I defer to Director Anthony for negotiating those. We had projected what they were going to be, and what we've secured was a lower rate than what was anticipated. Again, I think that's to the town's credit and fiscally responsible.
Excellent, thank you. Any discussion on my right? Seeing none, and Counsel Lebec?
Thank you, President Tamish. Just a quick question on the increase for seasonal staffing, is that just because it just costs more to get people to work for us?
We have employees that work down at the facility that are making $15 an hour, that are in charge of ice operations, that are much needed on a race. And as we try to forecast and potentially look at fee increases down the road, customer service is something that we would like to improve and give our employees an opportunity.
Nice, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, I believe I neglected to close the public hearings, I will close the public hearing, and we will go to a vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Passes ten, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Gennella.
Thank you.
And your staff? Okay, moving on. 2025-164. Counselor Turkelson?
Thank you, President Tamish. This is an item of old business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority vote of the full council. It's item 2025-164, an appropriation order in the amount of $1,697,514 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2026 Marine and Environmental Affairs Department General Fund Budget, as written.
Second.
Okay, made and seconded. At this point, I will open the public hearing, and Mr. Mill, there's the...
Mark Mill. Thank you, President Tamish. The proposed Marina and Environmental Affairs Department General Fund Budget is increasing just under $59,000 to $1,697,514. The average annual increase in this budget from fiscal year 22 to 2026 has been 8.3% as this operation has seen a significant increase in activity post-COVID. This operation generates about 33% of its funding from various fees and charges while taxes support the other 65%. $33,000 of general fund reserves will be used to balance the budget. Changes to the proposed budget for fiscal year 26 include just over $40,000 for contractual obligations, just over $9,000 is provided for the Harbor Master supplies, and additional $9,900 for transient mooring gear and software. The budget includes funding for 13.05 FTEs, the same number as the previous year. And Director Lawson is here with his team tonight to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard on this article? Seeing no one, no one online. Counsel discussion. Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Okay. Wow, that was easy. Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Bloom.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Passes ten, yes.
Very good, thank you. Okay, moving on to the Sandy Neck Enterprise, 2025-166, excuse me, 165, Marina Enterprise Fund. Counsel Ludke.
Thank you. This is old business, requires a public hearing, a roll call, two-thirds, full council. 2025-165, appropriation order in the amount of $803,433 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2026 Marina Enterprise Fund Budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded. At this point, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this article? Seeing no one, no one online.
Mark Mill.
Mark? Mr. Mill.
Thank you, President Tamish. The proposed budget for fiscal year 26 for the direct operating expenses of the Marina Enterprise Fund are increasing $23,365 to just over $803,000. Again, this does not include the indirect cost charges for the operation that are paid to the general, paid to the general fund. The budget has averaged a 2.5% increase from fiscal year 22 to 2026. 89% of the funding in this operation is provided from the revenue generated at the Marina facilities. A small amount of general fund support is provided, about $30,000, to cover the costs budgeted in this operation associated with the maintenance and utilities of the Pismo Park Comfort Station. A total of $25,181 in the Marina Enterprise Fund reserves will be used to balance the FY26 proposed budget. The FY26 proposed budget includes $1,997 for contractual obligations, $28,468 in additional funding for seasonal staff and wage increases, as well as staffing increases on weekends at Prince Cove Marina and Barnstable Harbor. Debt service is decreasing $7,100. Operating capital is level funded at $58,000 to provide for the routine replacement of docks, floats, hardware, and gangways. This operation includes funding for 1.65 FTEs, the same amount as fiscal year 2025. And again, Director Lawson is here this evening with his team to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counsel Schnepp.
Thank you, President Tamish. Two quick questions. Your FTE is 1.65. I'm assuming your other budget covers some of that, because you have three staff on Harbor Master, or four?
Yes, that's correct. So Brian Taylor, Harbor Master Brian Taylor is going to answer your questions for the budget for the Marina.
Brian Taylor, Harbor Master. So a portion of our assistant Harbor Masters, as well as our Marina Supervisor, come from that 1.65.
Okay.
And we have four total.
Four total. And the capital outlay was $58,000 this year and last year. What does that go for?
So currently, we're replacing docks in Barnstable Harbor and a few gangways, and so we're continuing with the project for replacing the docks right now.
Okay, thank you.
We have about four years left, three to four years left.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Vice President Clark?
Thank you very much, President Tamish. Quick one, what do you attribute the decrease in the debt service for this time around?
So the decrease in debt services is for paying off from loans at Prince Cove Marina.
Any discussion on my left? Seeing none? All right. At this point, I'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Ten, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Bloom, if you could do 166, please.
Certainly, thank you, President Tamish. This is old business, public hearing, roll call, majority vote of the full council. Item number 2025-166, appropriation order in the amount of $1,165,364 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2026 Sandy Neck Park Enterprise Fund Budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I'll make a motion, or I will open or out of the public hearing, and Mr. Mill?
Thank you, President Tamish. The FY26 proposed budget for the direct operating expenses of the Sandy Neck Park Enterprise Fund are increasing $77,785 to $1,165,364. Again, this does not include the indirect cost charges of the operation that are paid to the general fund. This budget has averaged a 6.8% increase per year since fiscal year 22 to fiscal year 2026 as the use of the facility has experienced a noteworthy increase post-COVID. 100% of the funding for this operation is provided from the revenue generated at the facility and its reserve fund. A total of $125,673,000 and Sandy Neck Park Enterprise Fund reserves will be used to balance the FY26 proposed operating budget. The proposed fiscal year 2026 budget includes $8,760 in contractual obligations, $20,000 for seasonal staff wage increase to compete and attract seasonal employees needed at the operation, a reduction of just over $10,000 in indirect costs from the general fund, an increase of $3,925 for debt service, and $45,100 for capital outlay. The additional capital outlay is provided for possible renovations to the gatehouse structure. As part of the coastal resiliency project at Sandy Neck, the structure is expected to be moved this winter, 2025, 2026. Unforeseen costs may be encountered during the move, which this funding is provided. This budget includes funding for five full-time equivalents, the same amount as in fiscal year 2025. And again, Director Lawson is here with his team to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this article? Seeing no one, seeing no one online. Council discussion? Little bit off the subject, but where are we on moving of the gatehouse and all that?
Nina Coleman, Sandy Neck Park Manager. Thank you for that question. We have already gone out to bid for a contractor and we are looking at the beginning of our coastal resiliency project starting after Labor Day. So the gatehouse will be moved sometime this winter.
And that's step one?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion on my counsel, Schnapp?
Thank you, President Tamish. Just a question on the seasonal wage increase. Are you fully staffed for this season and do you anticipate the need next year to increase compensation? Is that why that's?
We are fully staffed. We're working with the rec department to try to improve recruitment for lifeguards. That's really the big topic for us. And if we do lifeguard increases, we need to also increase our enforcement staff. That's a pretty complicated, complex job and requires a lot of skill and tact. And so we want to make sure that that's also competitive. So those are the two seasonal positions that we're evaluating for increases.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on my right? On my left, seeing none? I will close the public hearing at this point. Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Clark.
Bloom, I'm sorry.
Clark.
Clark, yes.
Okay. 10 yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, excuse me, Vice President Clark, I'll get it one of these.
167.
167, please?
This is old business, requiring a public hearing with a roll call, majority vote of the full council. Agenda item 2025-167, appropriation order in the amount of $2,800,183 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2026 Inspection Services Department budget.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. At this, oh, Madam Town Attorney.
Thank you. Did you want to take a vote to go past 11?
Yeah, well, we can, we're in one, so we can finish that one and then we'll take it. Or you think we should do that now? I was very aware of the time.
Either way.
Okay. Okay. Chris? Go ahead.
Thank you. The FY26 proposed budget for the Inspection Services Department is increasing $215,790 to $2,800,182. This operation generates revenue from various fees, licenses, and permits that cover nearly 100% of its direct operating costs. Only 3% of the budget is supported from taxes and reserves. Budget growth has averaged 5.3% from FY22 to FY26. Changes to the proposed budget include $151,242 for contractual obligations and $13,748 for the vehicle lease renewal contract. A new position is added to the budget for an administrative assistant for code compliance to support the growing administrative needs of the code compliance program. The program, managed by a single staff member, serves as a centralized resource for requests for services and noncriminal citations from various town departments and agencies, including the Harbor Master, Natural Resources, Animal Control, and Police. As the volume and complexity of cases have increased, additional administrative support is essential to maintain efficient case management and ensure timely response to citizen complaints. Not included in the FY26 budget proposal is a proposed reorganization of this department to create a new division called Code Compliance. Still under development, this reorganization will be brought forward within the next couple of months and will include the request to add several new positions, which will be funded with a proposed rate increase on various charges administered by the department. It is envisioned that the proposed new division will assist multiple departments and divisions with the management, administration, and enforcement of federal, state, local laws, rules, regulations, codes, and policies within its jurisdiction, including codes such as zoning, wiring, plumbing, gas piping within the town of Barnstable for the purpose of protecting residents' quality of life, public health, safety, and peaceful use of property. It will oversee this management and processing of investigations, assist enforcement staff with the adherence of statutory and court timelines and deadlines, manages court documentation preparation, and assists the town attorney's office. Commissioner Florence is here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. It's a public hearing. I will open the public hearing at this point. Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this item? Seeing none, seeing no one online. Anyone from the council would like to, Counsel Ludke?
Thank you. Yeah, it sounds like you mentioned it and we all know that Andy Kleiber is working on an effort with the enforcement. Is that what you were referring to, that we might be seeing something coming up where we'd have some additions to this or some opportunities to change?
Thank you for your question, Counsel Ludke and President Tamish and council members. This request here is a modest request to help one of our employees with workload issues. It's a small part of a bigger initiative that has actually been going on for some time now. You'll see several initiatives from Inspection Services in the near future that we've been working on, again, for several years regarding enforcement concerns that we recognized as far back as 2017 when I came on board here. The work we'll be bringing forth will begin with a reorganization effort to include changes to administrative code, creating, as Chris has just said, a code compliance division. Next, we'll be bringing significant fee change proposals, which we hope will help to fund some of the enforcement needs that we have. And then finally, we'll be proposing some ordinance changes to help with the enforcement. But this position here just fulfills an immediate need and is the start of the rest of the work.
Okay, that's good. And any timeline when you think the other pieces might fall into place? Is it going to be incremental or is it going to be a package that you come forward with?
Out of necessity, it'll come in pieces, but it isn't with the intent of bringing a whole package forward.
Okay, and the final question is, I know there's been a lot of issues with, you know, going around to see violations occurring in terms of normal work hours, that a lot of things happen at times when you're not at work and it's difficult. You have to do the overtime pay and things like that. So a resident asked me very seriously, and perhaps Attorney Noor would have to chime in on this, could we use drones that could be flown at different hours to see what's going on when maybe you don't need a person there?
Well, the building division does have a drone and we do use it for enforcement, but it's only when we have, we can't fly a drone overnight. It's not something that would be practical. But we do have a drone and we do use it for enforcement. And it's a misnomer that our staff don't go out at night. We do. We go out quite frequently. I was at a, did an inspection about a month or two ago at 10 o'clock at night. So we do, we do that all the time. And I do sometimes have to authorize overtime, but yeah.
No, that's good, that's good to hear because I have heard from constituents that they've asked, you know, for people to come out at times that aren't the normal times because that's when things are happening and it becomes difficult. So as long as you have the budget for the overtime and that's good to hear that you have a drone that you're using.
We do.
Okay.
Thank you. Any discussion on my left? Counselor Crowe?
Thank you, President Tamish. Director Florence, about this FTE, could that person be hired as a regular schedule, not Monday through Friday, but, you know, Wednesday through Tuesday or something like that? So the concentration of hours would be on the most likely times that there'd be violations?
Thank you, Counselor Crowe, for the question. This is an administrative person. This is a person that would be handling administrative duties in the office. The inspectional staff that we're going to be talking about will come at a later time.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at this point. Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Passes 10 yes. Thank you.
Okay, it is 11 o'clock, a couple minutes past 11. I would like a motion to continue the meeting for the purposes of continuing these articles, unless we want to keep going.
President Tamish, I move that we go beyond 11 o'clock to continue this meeting.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
That was confusing.
Counselor Mendez?
Yeah, how long we going?
We're not, my suggestion is we go, we have several items here. We're not going to have any more hearings. But we have to do housekeeping to move all of these items to the 26th, I believe it would be. And then a couple of the other ones. But it's just, it's going to be housekeeping issues and no more hearings.
I'm keeping you to that.
All right.
Someone's got to get up at 4:00 in the morning.
We could just stay here till 4:00. No, okay. That's my intent, is to move those articles and get everything wrapped up for next meeting. Any further discussion on that? Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Ludke.
Oh, excuse me. Madam Clerk, we no longer have anybody on Zoom. Do we need to do roll calls? Okay. All in favor?
Oh, that moves us on.
Okay, thank you. Any opposed? Okay. Seeing none.
That's why he gets the tall dollars.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, could I have a motion, please, to move 2025-168, 169, 170, 171, 172, 173, 174, 175, 76, 77, 78, 79? So we're talking, could I have a motion, please, to move 2025-168 through 2025-179 to June 26? The articles as written to individual public hearings to be held, each item on June 26.
So moved. So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Seeing none? Okay, that takes care of those. No. Okay, and could I have a motion to move 2025, to continue 2025-180 to June 26?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. And then we have 2025, could I have a motion, please, to, although that's a refer to public hearing? Consent, could I have a motion, please, under a consent agenda, to move 2025-188, 2025-190, 2025-191, and 2025-192 to I'm sorry. Oh, one's a public hearing.
Two of them are public hearings. One of them is a refer to a second read.
Okay, so we should do them individually?
You can lump the two public hearing ones. That's 188 and 190 if you want.
Okay, okay. Do I have a motion, please, to move 2025-188 and 2025-190 to individual public hearings on June 26?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? None. And then we've, Mr. Els.
Continue 189 unless you want to do it.
Well, I don't know if he, if there's any time on that. Okay.
Did we do 185?
Is there any time? Okay.
If you do it in June, you're good.
All right, could I have a motion, please, to about?
To continue 189 to?
Well, we were just going to, we were just going to get rid of it now.
Going to do it? Okay.
Okay. Could I have a motion, Charlie, to read 2025-189? Charlie? 2025-189? Okay. Hey, Mike?
Sorry about that. Motion to move 2025-189 resolving Mark Els outside employment with Cape Cod Community College may be acted upon by a majority of the vote.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Do we need a rationale? I think it's pretty self-explanatory myself. Any discussion on the council's part? We, this would just be a, we do not need a voice, vote?
Majority of them.
All in favor? Signified by saying aye? Aye. All opposed? No? All set?
Thank you.
Now, let's see, what can we do here? So those two are referred. Where can we move that, huh?
That's easy, we can do it.
Well, I told Counselor Mendez.
No, no, we can do it, that's quick.
2025-191, would you read that in, Vice President Clark?
This is agenda item 2025-191, a resolve approving a letter supporting the fiscal year 2026 budget requests of the Cape and Islands District Attorney's Office for additional funding to combat elder fraud.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? I think you've all seen the letter and all the rationale. Okay. All in favor? Signified by saying aye? Aye. All opposed? The motion passes. And Kristin, you just want to move that last one?
No, she wants to read it and vote it.
Yeah.
Read it.
Well, it's just, it's moving it to a second reading, right? That's all. It's just moving it to a second reading. Yeah, go ahead.[1737.22]
All right. This is an item of new business, first reading referred to a second reading on six twenty-six twenty twenty-five. It's item twenty twenty-five dash one ninety-two, appointments to a board committee and commission to the Open Space Committee and Youth Commission as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? By saying aye? Aye. Okay, is that everything, I believe?
I think one eighty-five.[1703.01]